Good afternoon. The November 14th, 2023 Board Work Session is now in order. Paul, roll call please.
Mr. Susan?
Here.
Ms. Wright?
Here.
Mr. Trent?
Here.
Ms. Campbell?
Here.
Ms. Jenkins?
Here.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our law.
First order of business in rule development is Board Policy 2120, School Improvement. Is where I could take a second and say, how's everybody doing?
Good.
Feel good about it? Weather changing a little bit?
Yeah.
Excited about the Thanksgiving vacation that we have?
Yes, excited all week off.
Okay, we are, thank you for that nice pause so that I could flip the page. We are discussing 2120 where we looked at just adding some components from NEOLAs, but also just being mindful that we, a lot of what was in NEOLA was already in our practice. So even though it wasn't in our current policy, it was in our practice. If you go to Section 5 where it speaks to early warning systems, that's where you'll find things. We've already been using the state template for our school improvement process. So those are indicators we've already been tracking.
Any questions on the board?
This is the public hearing, so this is where we ask for public comment.
Okay. We'll get it. Does anybody wish to speak to this item? Anybody wish to speak to this item? Hearing none. Any board have any discussion? Hearing none. We're good?
Mm-hmm.
You need a vote on this one there?
No.
Okay, we're just moving on. All right, next order in rule development is on Board Policy 2131, Educational Goals. Ms. Harris.
So this one, we made the revisions when this was in work session last time. And so we discussed the, using NEOLA specifically around the section around art and culture. I think there was an error in putting some content in there, so we revised that.
Does anybody wish to speak to this item? Does any member of the public wish to speak to this item? Hearing none. Any board members wish to speak to this item? Hearing none. Move on. Next in rule development is on Board Policy 2210, Curriculum Development.
This one, the last time we discussed this one in the red line version, there were no revisions. So it's the same as it was last time.
Does anybody wish to speak to this item? Does anybody wish to speak to this item? Hearing none. Does any board member wish to speak to this item? Hearing none. Next in rule development is on Board Policy 2216, Gifted Education.
Again, no new revision since the last time we looked at this one. This one was basically combining elementary and secondary so that we have a gifted procedure.
Anybody wish to speak to this item? Anybody wish to speak to this item? Hearing none. Any board member wish to discuss this item?
I'm just glad it's condensed down because it was quite a hefty policy. Thank you for doing that.
Hearing no other further comment. Moving on, the next in rule development is on Board Policy 2260, Non-Discrimination and Access to Equal Education Opportunity. Any, Ms. Harris?
I believe that is, Ms. Stan Pierre, is that your policy? 2260.
Yeah, this one was just changing the numbering so that it didn't conflict with the NEOLA template.
Right.
Oh yeah, yeah, we made it the statute, yeah.
Right.
It is number 2260.
We, for this particular policy, 2260, it was adding the definition which we did. And it says, "as defined by Bylaw 0100," and we were questioning whether or not we had that. And we actually have that. We have Bylaw and we have that information posted there.
Okay.
So there was a need to change to statute.
We don't have the definition in our file.
Everybody okay?
Yep.
Anybody wish to speak to this item? Anybody wish to speak to this item? Any board member wish to speak to this item? Hearing none. We're going to move on. The next rule development is on Board Policy 2260.01, Anti-Harassment and Non-Discrimination Appeal Process.
That was just the renumbering to not conflict with the NEOLA template.
Okay. Does anybody wish to speak to this item? Does anybody wish to speak to this item? Any board member wish to speak to this item? Hearing none. Moving on. Next in rule development is on Board Policy 2410, School Health Services.
There were no changes to 2410. I think we were pretty, we took NEOLAs the revisions.
Okay.
And we added based on what we were actually doing here within our district.
Okay. Anybody wish to speak to this item? Anybody wish to speak to this item? Hearing none. Any board member wish to speak to this item? None. We'll move on. The next rule development is on Board Policy 2410, Mental Health Services.
This was a new policy to ensure compliance with federal and state law to be aligned with 2410, the procedures.
Okay, anybody wish to speak to this item? Anybody wish to speak to this item? Hearing none. Any board member wish to speak to this item? Okay. Next in rule development is on Board Policy 2410.01, Mental Health Services. Oh, I apologize. Next rule development is on Board Policy 5114, Foreign Students.
And that one, we made no changes last time. So the only feedback from our last discussion on this is that we're seeking feedback from other districts as to what their process is for this.
Thank you for that. Anybody wish to speak to this item? Anybody wish to speak to this item? Hearing none. Any board member wish to speak to this item? Hearing none. Next in rule development is on Board Policy 5410, Student Progression.
And there were no changes the last time we brought the red line, so this one stays the same.
Anybody wish to speak to this item? Anybody wish to speak to this item? Hearing none. Any board member wish to speak to this item? Hearing none. Moving on. The next in rule development is on Board Policy 5420, Report Student Progress.
So on this one, the feedback from last time was just some formatting, and so that has been fixed.
Okay.
It was the section under Report Cards, having those be subsections underneath that.
Anybody wish to speak to this item? Anybody wish to speak to this item? Hearing none. Any board member wish to speak to this item? Hearing none. Moving on. The next in rule development is on Board Policy 5421, Grading.
There are no changes based on our last discussion on this policy.
Does anybody wish to speak to this item? Does anybody wish to speak to this item? Hearing none. Any board members wish to speak to this item? Okay, moving on. The next in rule development is on Board Policy 5421.01, Grade Forgiveness.
And this one we brought last time. It was a brand-new policy, so we went with NEOLA. There is no change since we last discussed this.
Okay. Anybody wish to speak to this item? Anybody wish to speak to this item? Hearing none. Moving on. Next in rule development is on Board Policy 5430, Class Rank.
There are no changes since we last discussed this at work session.
Anybody wish to speak to this item? Anybody wish to speak to this item? Hearing none. Moving on to the school board. Anybody wish to speak to this item? Hearing none. Moving on. Next in rule development is on Board Policy 5451, Student Recognition. Ms. Harris.
There are no changes to this one since we last discussed.
Okay. Anybody wish to speak to this item? Anybody wish to speak to this item? Hearing none. Any school board member wish to speak to this item? Hearing none. Moving on. Board Policy 5460.01, Graduation Requirements for Transfer Students. Anybody wish to speak to this item? I'm sorry, Ms. Harris.
I don't wish to speak. It's no changes since we last discussed.
Yeah.
Okay. Anybody wish to speak to this item? Anybody wish to speak to this item? Hearing none. Any board member wish to speak to this item? All right, moving on. The next ruling development, Policy 5464, Accelerated Graduation Options. Ms. Harris?
No changes since we last discussed.
Okay. Anybody wish to speak to this item? Anybody wish to speak to this item? Hearing none. Any board member wish to? Oh, Ms. Campbell, welcome.
Just to break the monotony before we get on, before we let you loose, except I know you have some more later. I just want to thank you and your division for your work on all these policies because it's not like you haven't had a lot to do over the last several months. But taking the time to rework these and work with us on it, I very much appreciate it. And Ms. Stan Pierre, you too.
We have good teams.
Five thousand's a lot of you. I just want to thank you this time.
Thank you. We have good teams.
Okay. Thank you for that, Ms. Campbell. Okay. Anybody else? Hearing none. Let's move on. The last in rule development on Board Policy 6320, Procurement and Contracting. You going to tackle that one or no?
There were no changes since the board last considered it.
Right, this is the one.
Right. I'll speak for Mr. Wilson. He's on a call right now. Yeah, this just reflects the changes that were suggested in the work session. Some stuff about preferences for veteran-owned businesses and some language change about renewals. But all things that were agreed upon in the last work session.
Sounds like a plan. Anybody else wish to speak to this item? Any member from the public wish to speak to this item? Hearing none. Any board member wish to speak to this? Nope. Okay. Moving on, the next topic is Charter School Application Presentation.
I don't see the, is there a representative from Orion Charter?
Wow, it's a short presentation.
Yeah, we'll just push it, yeah, we'll just push it back.
Hold it and see if they...
Is there anybody in here that might be able to like reach out to them and say, hey?
Yes, I can reach out to someone that can reach out to them.
I don't think we've received any documentation regarding their application either. I mean, usually there's a big binder for each... Okay.
Five thousand pages.
Okay, can we just send a reminder? Can you please, Lena, send a reminder so we can take a look at it? I didn't see, usually there is and it's written on the agenda item. That wasn't there.
Okay.
So I didn't know to look, but again, and they also usually come and talk to us about their plan.
Well, that's what we were expecting today was a brief PowerPoint presentation from them today. That's what we were expecting.
I'm fine with holding them to space later if we have time.
Yeah, it's possible maybe someone told them to like wait a little since there was all those policies ahead of time.
Right.
That's true.
Yeah, they probably didn't expect 15 minutes to get through that many.
And they might have read my email where it said 2 o'clock.
Yeah.
Oh.
No, they didn't get that email, but...
If you want to move to reproduction, health, and disease...
Yep, that's all we're going to do.
Okay.
Just want to give them the opportunity. Next topic is Reproductive Health and Disease Education Materials.
So these are materials we've discussed before. One proposal, and I think Lena had the materials there, would be to remove sections in the workbook. So we would actually be removing those pages when they were purchased and then when they were on the state adopted list. That was prior to language that now is specific to the type of instruction we can do. So that is one proposal. If, if that proposal is not, does not work for the board, we would need to then either bring in a committee to write some curriculum or go out for bid and basically begin the instructional material review for that course. I can tell you just in doing a little homework, there are not a lot of perfect products out there right now. So even if we wanted to entertain that, it would take some time. And we do have some students in a course that will need this instruction soon. So we would just need to decide what that looks like for those benchmarks and standards.
Anybody wish to have a conversation?
Yeah, I've got three suggestions. One, that we go with this plan for right now because we do have, you know, people in mid-course that have curriculum requirements that need to get done, pulling out these pages. Two, that we send a note to the DOE saying that they have a book that's, I'm assuming, still on their list that is out of compliance, and they need to send notice to all the districts who might be using this. And then three, that we potentially get together a committee to work on new curriculum that will meet the standards for next year. We'd go ahead and start working on that so that we've got maybe a better product in place. And of course, at this point, we could have time to go, but you said to go look and do a new adoption, but if there's not something good out there, that's not helpful.
Right now, just because of the publishing time, like publishing companies just have not had time to get in front of this. And so there's just not something available. I want to update you as well from the Department of Ed because remember we talked about how they said if your board approved these before, you're probably fine to just move forward and then we'll later come and approve them. I can tell you they have just now sought teacher input, so they're going to be creating a team of teachers to come in and review instructional materials. And remember, that language was effective, you know, day one. And so I'm assuming if they're soliciting teachers now, that that could be February before they bring that team in. So I think it behooves us to do something for our students today. And then as they work that process, we look at our next steps as well.
Can I just ask the one question that I had before was is the, the material still available to the students through their Google Classroom? Do we have an online version of the material where it's still accessible and we could be in trouble?
Here is the good news for this is that was because the adoption, when you buy that digital, it's usually for five years and then you buy it a traditional year that was not purchased. And so we no longer have access to, allow students to even access it digitally.
Okay, good. So this will just be the paperback, the old fashioned copies. All right, and what does that look like as far as, because we're going to be removing these sections? Who exactly will be doing that part?
I've talked to our Director of Secondary Programs, Molly Vega. We have talked about bringing in a team of people to go out and support schools in this because it can be time-consuming. Fortunately, we're not talking about like a whole school using this book. It's just students in those sections. But we feel strongly that we want to support schools in doing that to ensure that it's exactly as you're, you know, as you plan.
So you want to join the page ripping up party? Yeah. I will help for help is needed, so. All right, thank you for your work on this. I know this is not a perfect solution, but I guess it's a Band-Aid right now until we can find the best solution, so.
Anybody else?
Tara, so that, that works for me too, is remove, remove the pages. We have the books. I mean, even moving forward, if, if we don't have to purchase anything else and we already have these, we're good. So appreciate it.
And you will see that again on the agenda for tonight for...
All right, anybody else?
5463.
Hearing none. We'll move on to the next topic, which is Board Policy 5463, Credits From Other Schools. Thank you, Ms. Harris, for bringing your notebook today. It's like you have the...
Thank goodness for the notebook.
Tara Harris here today.
Yes.
That's just one meeting.
So with this policy, 5463, Credits From Other Schools, the only change is that we added the link to our student progression plan.
Thank you.
Which is good. Anybody else have anything to add? Thank you for doing that, Ms. Harris. The next topic is the fee increase for Brevard Before and After School.
Yes, so Dr. Mayer, our Assistant Director of School Choice and Charter, will be doing that. She is not here, and so I'm going to just go back to my phone because I just need to... The notebook can't rescue me for that.
Yeah, we're just way ahead of schedule, so we got to get the next presenter in here.
We've got a lot on the schedule, so we can just keep moving up and coming back.
Yeah, you want to give her some breathing room? What's the next thing?
Yeah.
Yep.
Supplements?
Supplements review and moving forward.
When she walks in, she's going to need some time to...
All right, we'll give her a little bit of time. The next topic is the supplements review and moving forward discussion. Just so everybody understands, I put this on here. The idea was is that we had said inside the meeting that we wanted to publicly have a conversation wrapped around what we were going to do with it. Mike, can you give me a thumbs up that you can actually hear me in there? We're good? Okay, so when we had this discussion back, when we made the decisions and stuff like that, there was some concern by some of the other entities that were a part of this that we were not going to be serious about what we did, right? And the argument was is that one of the things that we wanted, they had asked was they said, look, can you publicly state? Can you guys publicly state what you guys said and make it public so that we knew and it's on the record and stuff like that? Meaning that we had said that in the event that if the supplements, there's a large amount at the end of it that were not used or rollover, that we would then engage in having a conversation wrapped around what to do with those. That they would not just go somewhere else. Does that make sense to you? And I just wanted to kind of publicly have that. It was kind of a conversation that was brought to me and I said, that's easy for us to just put down. Does anybody have any issue with that direction or did you want to engage in it?
Oh, that's...
It was just what we had in...
It's interesting because that's not what I thought this conversation was going to be about.
Okay. It's just to say what we, moving forward with the discussion was, we had a lump sum of revenue. We have a moving target on the mill... We have a moving target on the millage, right, that may have more or less based on that. At the end of the supplements, there will be X amount left over, and it'll be up to us to come back and discuss, not just let it roll somewhere else. That's all.
Go ahead.
Okay.
All right, so looking at that and how that works out logistically, I'm 100% an advocate for, hey, if we are saying we're gonna use it for supplements, we want it in supplements. We don't want it to roll to the bottom and just fall into the general fund, right? And that is, I think that was the concern. So I do have a question, though, how that looks for us to look retrospectively and say, "Oh, these coaches or these teachers agreed to this," and now, I don't know if that... I think what would be better is for us to look at this and take a deep dive into how we are using our supplements and finding out, "Hey, have we accurately estimated the supplements so that we know next year, moving forward, we have more money to work with on supplements because we're not spending it all?" Does that make sense? I think it's gonna be really, really hard to retroactively do that. I don't...
I don't think we discussed retro...
I think it stays with supplements, though. Like, hear me when I say that. Like, I think it stays with supplements. But it, just retroactively giving it to them, I think is gonna be very challenging. I don't know how our... I don't know how we would do that. And then would we go back to bargaining? And I don't, I'm just thinking, wow, that might be really difficult, right?
I think we had agreed to that. I think we had said that retroactively would be too difficult to do. I think where our direction was is that at the end, there will be, if there is a sum of money that we would come together and collectively figure out what we would do with that, not just let it fall to the bottom line, is what they were afraid of.
Right, and I mean, I'm an advocate for, hey, don't let it fall to the bottom. Keep it in supplements. That's what we're saying the money was allocated for. So if that means we have more dollars next year to negotiate supplements, then that means we have more dollars to negotiate supplements, which means they're gonna get a higher supplement. And in essence, it's the same thing. You're giving it to them. It's just you're gonna give it to them next year when we know we have more money to negotiate with, right?
Absolutely.
So part of the process that we are embarking upon with the millage, with our new citizens oversight committee, will be just like the half-cent sales tax oversight committee, the I C O C, that, you know, part of their job is to make sure that each bucket, we even actually have it broken down in policy for the sales tax. This percentage goes to facility renewal, this percentage goes to security, this percentage goes to technology, right? And same thing with the millage because we have broken it down. I absolutely agree that that percentage, if this, you know, of that, I can't remember what it was called, B1 or A1, A2, all of that, right, the letters. You know, the bucket that is for supplement, I mean, for salary supplements, that needs to all... And if we don't use it all up, we roll it into the next year. That's for the supplement supplements, like the coaching and E S C and all that, because we did that 30% increase in our contract. That that needs to stay there. The technology needs to stay there, that whatever we put, whatever we've broken it down into. There is a portion that can be a fall to the bottom. It's already written out in M O Us, those things. But, yeah, you're specifically talking about the supplements, like for coaches and stuff like that.
All supplements. At the end of it all, we will evaluate what we want to do for the next direction.
But it needs to stay in its own bucket. But I agree, Ms. Wright, that's going back and giving somebody extra $35.22 because we divvied it up. Yeah, it just needs to be that committee, that supplement committee that meets with, between the unions and the district, and they work on this every year when the contract. I think that's some work that they can do with whatever money is left over there.
And there's so many needs between...
That's okay.
There's so many needs between now and then that we may find that we need to allocate resources into a different direction, to a different place, having that ability at the end. I think the idea was just that we did not want to let it fall to the bottom line, that we would have the conversation, and that's it, right?
So I don't know if this already happens on the union side of things, so they might say we do that already. But is there a way for us to analyze or to survey what positions of like teacher sponsorships for certain clubs or activities or sports, if anything, are not necessarily receiving a supplement right now? For instance, I've advocated for sources of strength, right? That's just one example. But there might be other ones out there where teachers aren't really speaking up about the service that they're doing for our kids that they're not necessarily getting rewarded for financially. So if we do have stuff fall to the bottom, that would be the perfect way to kind of bring those people into the fold if we can.
Yeah, I don't necessarily want to give Kevin Robinson more work to do, but...
Right, I mean, if it's excessive, I completely understand that, but if it's possible...
A simple survey to the principals should yield that information. I think also, not speaking for him, but I believe he plans to look at the supplements we already have and kind of do an analysis of what gets filled every year and what doesn't. And if there are certain supplements that are not getting filled every year, we had a discussion about this, it might be time to eliminate those. You know, for example, school newspaper, there's not too many schools that still have a school newspaper. Some do, but not as many. So, you know, but schools that aren't operating a school newspaper still have that supplement on their sheet. We budget for it, and then we don't necessarily issue it. So some analysis of what supplements we already have and see where maybe, you know, some of them aren't getting filled. And then an analysis of maybe some services that we're providing that aren't supplemented and maybe, you know, replace those or something like that.
Because there's that line item that I'm calling it what I'm calling it. It's not what it's labeled as. But like basically that discretionary line item that you explained, that things like sources of strength sometimes are being supplemented depending on the administrator. So it's, sometimes it could be inequitable because certain schools aren't doing it.
Sure, there's a few unique supplements, basically, and the school can write in those, you know, but they're not, they're like 500, you know, now they'd be 500 plus 30%. But, you know, I think, I believe Kevin plans on doing that work. Kind of looking at what we're doing, what's not ever being filled, should we replace it?
Okay. I think we're all in agreeance. I think publicly we've stated we're in good. All right, next up, we have the Brevard before and after school program analysis. Thank you so much for coming in. Appreciate you. We're moving kind of quick today, so thank you.
Welcome. Thank you for having me. Sorry. First, I'm gonna provide a little information about Brevard before and after care, and then I'm gonna show a comparative analysis between our before and after care and summer programs to the existing ones that are in the surrounding area in our county. And then I'm gonna take a deep dive into the analysis of financials with our revenues and our expenditures for the program. And then I'm gonna project a proposal for a scheduled fee increase. Okay, so we have three different program offerings through B A S. We have the fee-based program of the before, after, summer program, and you can do both. Then we have a grant, the Twenty-First Century Community Learning Centers, that's funded for after care for certain schools that are awarded that grant. And then we also have another Iowa grant that's an intensive after-school and weekend academics program. Okay, we do give a great benefit to our employees. We have deeply discounted rates for employee limited use, before care, after care, both before and after care, summer camps, and daily drop-ins. So the way we run B A S, we run it like a business. It's through an enterprise fund. It's a district-operated fund that provides before care, after care, and summer programs. We treat it like a business, and we use the general accepted accounting principles. Okay, the areas of success, we have an enrichment program where we allow vendors to come in and provide enrichment for our children. That totaled last year $26,041.41. We increased full-time fee-based enrollment, which is like before, after, and summer by 10%. We improved our increased summer camp by 25%. We were awarded the Iowa grant that we just went over for those programs for 10 sites. We maintained three Twenty-First Century grants and awarded three additional. And we reinstated our Gold Key Safety Program, which is where they go out to the sites and ensure that they are safe for our children. Okay, looking at this comparative analysis, these are the programs that are in the surrounding community that offer a before and after our summer program. We are significantly less in our registration fees throughout our program comparing to one where 42% of the cost of Berry Patch, which is the next one in line. Our before and after care rate, like together combined, is $10 lower per week than the lowest one, which is Kid Connection. And then we're $12 per week cheaper than the cheapest site of Jelly Bean Junction. Okay, so looking at our 2023 fiscal year, which was last year, we were, our beginning fund balance after all the fees was, the parentheses just mean a deficit, so a negative balance of $1,734,639. And if you just look at how much we made in our fees without that beginning negative fund balance, we were at $1,054,770. Transferring that to this year, we are projected to be in a negative of $2,224,181. And then after the fees and the fund balance, the negative fund balance is not looked at, we're down $489,542.
Can I kind of pause your...
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Is that, because I didn't see this in the presentation, is that mainly due to the raises that we're projecting for...
Raises, and we bought computers, 54 per site, yes.
Thank you.
Fifty-seven, sorry, 57 computers. Okay, so most of our revenue is generated through our pay fee program for the before, after, and our summer camps. And most of our expenditures is due to the salaries and our benefits that we give to employees. Okay, so we have just three areas of concern. The negative fund balance that we're coming to the table with, recruitment and retention. As across education, it's difficult to find people. And then replacement of the 57 computers because the software program and they're just outdated. They were just not able to handle the workload.
I have a question.
Oh, go right ahead.
If I can stop you and ask you, if you go back to the slide, there's a transfers out portion that I'm seeing in here of the tune of $2 million?
Yes, ma'am. It goes to general fund.
We take it from them.
That goes to the general fund?
Yes, ma'am.
Why is that?
I asked the same question.
Because we steal it from them. Exactly what we do. We take it from them.
It's a business intended to make money for the district, and that is the, that is the amount of money that we budget every year that it's going to make for us to go into our general fund.
Okay, but this is a service to the community. It really is, and to our staff. So if we weren't to take that $2 million, you wouldn't be operating in a deficit. Is that correct?
In the past, long ago, prior to this going to the general fund, revenue was actually shared between schools and the district. And so principals could earn funding by hosting this program, and then some went to the district. It was half. And then I think during times of budget cuts, this was a revenue maker, and so that's when that was changed to support. But I do know that this is revenue that is counted on with our, for our district, that our B A S will provide this to the district.
So it goes into the bottom general fund, okay? And one of the arguments that...
Yeah, it's the same, like, it's yucky feeling. I get it. Because it's the same thing when we talk about like Head Start and stuff. It feels weird that they'll show up and show us a presentation that they're in a negative and where the left's taking that. And I'm assuming where your sentiment is, and I probably agree with it. But then that has to be replaced with something else, cut somewhere, if we were to say we don't do that anymore. But I agree with you because it feels weird.
So historically speaking, and when we're in budget deficits and we're cutting, that's not where we are right now. Am I fair to say that? I mean, obviously, our revenues are up quite a bit based on the valuations of property. That's bothersome to me, so we can continue on.
Well, our revenues may be up in terms of property values, but our population, our enrollment is, you know, stagnant, if even decreased a little. So, and that's our, that's where we get the bulk of our funding is F T E.
Right.
So I wouldn't say we're flush with money or anything like that.
No, no, but we're definitely in a positive versus years past. And so, you know, my other question is the enrollment. That's one thing I didn't really see in the slide here. Like, where is our enrollment capacity at versus our staff for a lot of these sites?
Well, that brings up a good point. Many of our sites are actually having wait lists because of staffing. If we can't, because of that Gold Key Safety, there is a number. So it's a little different than during the school day, but after school, literally, we cannot go one student over. And so we have a lot of our programs on waitlist because of staff vacancies. And without doing a, an increase to the hourly rate of group leader roles, we're really struggling to bring on more, more staff. So I don't have the exact number of how many have wait lists, but many of our programs have waitlists to include some of our staff on those waitlists.
So I wanted to say, when I first became a board member, it was the tail end of them moving away from allowing the cost share from the schools. And there was a lot of upset principals at the time who, they received a portion of their after care. And what happened is, is that we decided to just pull that from them. So funding to the school-based location from the parents who decided to keep theirs there. The other component was is that a lot of the, they took ownership more so of their after-care program. When they had it, promoted it, did all of that, that kind of got lost. So there is a different model that we used to be at, and it's 100% right that the cuts came during the time when we had to make budget cuts. So I would love to have a conversation wrapped around, could that be possible? The one problem that we run into is that many of our Title, Title I schools don't generate the same revenue that the more affluent schools would. So some of your schools like Suntree, Manatee, all of those guys are jam-packed all the way through. And some of your Title I schools don't have the same after care. And so one of the reasons that they would allocate those funds back was to try to do a redistribution is what it is. But the bottom line is, is that I would love to have that conversation because I think there's opportunities for longer stays after school, not only after care, but tutoring and all those things that we could talk about that those kind of fill in. So anyways, thank you. I just wanted to kind of give them a perspective from when I first came on the board.
And that Twenty-First Century, that you got, brought up a great point because as the schools that have the Twenty-First Century Community Learning Centers might have just as many students in their program as a regular Brevard before and after, but yet they're not really generating any income because that funding is coming from the Twenty-First Century grant. And so, you know, I would, this is where we are. We are, this is absolutely legal for us to do it. It's an enterprise fund. It is meant to generate income for the district. We, as a board, can decide how we want to do it. In the past, the board has said, "Yeah, we're gonna use this to help supplement the general fund." And, you know, the CFOs have always budgeted that money. If we want to look at a different model, I'd say we ask the superintendent to take a look at what that might look like, but take into consideration that it would not be equitable just to allow the students, the schools that have Brevard before and after, they get to keep their money, but the Twenty-First Century can't. And we look at making that change possibly for next year, or a change of some sort, you know, to do some revenue sharing with the schools, some kind of model.
Right, not to justify necessarily the transfer out, but keep in mind, we provide the facility and maintenance of the facility and the energy and all that. Like, in other words, if they were going to a private after-school facility or before-school facility, that facility, that company would be bearing all those costs. And, you know, we're providing the facility and that kind of thing.
And the principal, that doesn't come out of the principal's budget. And neither does supervision of the program, right? Because supervision of Brevard, Brevard, I can't say it, before and after school, all comes at the district level. All that supervision comes from the coordinators, right?
We do have a coordinator, coordinators that run the program, but I would be remiss if I removed the role of the principals on those campuses because they do often, they're heavily engaged in the program.
I've been at my schools a lot in the last couple of weeks, and I mean, I'm seeing school staff that's going and helping with before care because there's people that aren't there. So, and then to do that for just the community, I don't know. For me, I don't like that transfers out, and now we're at a deficit, and now we need to pass that on to our families. When they just passed the millage, so they're already agreed to pay additional money in their tax bill for our educators, I don't like that at all. So I don't know how we can look at that and do this differently, but...
And for schools that do host our summer programs, those schools do, because that is an additional burden on the campus, but they do keep that revenue. There is, for principals that host it during the summer, that is funding that they're able to keep at their school sites.
It's a little bit different. One of the things that I always wondered was, my O'Gally Elementary Schools, some of them do or don't have after-care programs. I wonder if there's an opportunity to, in lagging after-care programs, if there's an opportunity to maybe cost share to drive it. Because a lot of those teachers that are inside of there would be able to be, you know what I mean? That would drive it as an after-care program if they knew that the funds were coming back. I don't know. There's some innovative ways we could possibly look at it. I would say, you know, I know you guys are always looking at the new ideas every year. I would promote Ms. Wright's opportunity to take a look at how we can possibly do, you know, raise some of those issues. Does that make sense? You guys good?
I think, I mean, I think it was already said, I mean, I know it was already said, but, you know, one of the most important things to focus on is there are many schools that have wait lists. So how do we entice staff to start working in our before and after-school programs consistently? Keyword. In order to ensure, number one, those children have access to those programs on campus because it's the best thing for them and their... In order to ensure, number one, those children have access to those programs on campus, because it's the best thing for them and their families, as well as it'll generate some more revenue. And I know that that's, that's a common problem throughout the district. Many, many share that with me. And I, just even as a parent, like, you know, at my little, my little beachside community school, like, once that, that link opens up, we're all texting each other, my friends, like, Mitre, get on there and get your spot! You know, because it's so hard to get in there. So it would not only be a benefit for the families and the community, but of course, it would start generating some more revenue. So we need to have a conversation about how we can entice more people to choose that as our career path.
All right.
Just questions around this, just to get my brain thinking, and it will have, this is going to have to be further conversations, and I do want you to finish, because your presentation-
Sorry, I know, I-
The before and after-care workers are governed under the ten-ten contract, correct?
I believe so.
The coordinators may be non-bargaining. I believe the coordinators are non-bargaining.
But staff would be.
The group leaders, I think, are ten-ten.
So it's not like we can run BAS completely like a business where it's separate entity, where they can set the salaries differently and things like that? We are still controlled by the contract?
If they're part of ten-ten.
If, right.
We'll check.
Right, right, okay, this is something I'd like to consider as we move forward with these ideas.
Yeah, because, I mean, just being transparent, like, I picked my daughter up and they thanked for what was happening and the increases that they saw, which my opinion weren't, weren't high enough. But they were happy, and it was hitting their paycheck already, so I believe that they're part of bargaining.
Right, and they do, we have the dual roles, sometimes there are people who, like, will work in the cafeteria and to BAS to make a full-time position, so that kind of keeps them all together too.
All right.
This is so small.
I know, I'm trying to enlarge it, it's blurry.
So let me just get back to that, so we actually have a ten-ten where we support giving them a certain raise, right? But then we don't have this funding source as part of our conversation to offset those ten-ten, does that make sense to you? So like, they're getting paid by this entity for their wages and everything else, but they're under our bargaining unit, so when we go to have the conversation wrapped around, this is how much money we have, we're including them into our base salary allocation that we're, does that make sense to you? Are you following me? So like, I always thought that they were not a part of that conversation, but that might be something we have to take a look at, just for the future, you know what I mean? That there may be a little bit of a variance there, so. Okay, thank you. Anybody else? So what are you guys looking for?
Okay, so the proposed increase is five percent on the first year, which we looked at January, but I think we're going to try for August to give everyone a, because this was made prior, previously, to look for, pushing for August, and that would give us enough time to tell parents and, and spread the word. So five percent the first year, three percent each additional year for four more years after that. But for an example, if you're looking at like the before and after, which most people use the before and after, the five percent the first year will go up four dollars per week, and each additional year, it'll go up two dollars. So it'll go from, I think it's seventy to seventy-four, and then to seventy-six and seventy-eight.
Are you asking for a, all the way across, because we have different rates based upon employees and everything else?
Yeah, it's across the board, I just gave that one example of the before and after, just to show you how much money in comparison.
It's always been my argument to, you know what I mean, allow our employees to have zero cost for health cares as part of our traction, you know?
Health care?
Well, I'm sorry, zero cost for their aftercare. The issue that you have is, is that we do have to create raises, and there is a significant difference between the two. So I'm okay myself with that.
And it is, it's more than fifty percent discount for, for, yeah, because like, it's like seventy, I only pay thirty-three per week for my son.
I get it, listen, I totally get that it's a great deal for after-school care and before-school care, I, my proposal would be, ex-nay the transfers out, and don't increase the fees to the family, that's what I would, would advocate for.
Say that again?
To, no more transfers out, you're not going to transfer out the money anymore, and I know that's going to cause an issue with the district, I know Cindy's going, oh my gosh, what are you doing back there? But I just, I feel like this is an unfair ask of our families, even if it's four dollars, a lot of our families are financially struggling. If you've gone to the grocery store, you filled your gas tank up recently, you know how expensive it is out there. So an additional increase hitting at every angle, whether it's insurance, or groceries, or childcare, or all over the place, doesn't help our families at all. So, and if we're transferring it out and we're taking the money of the district, mm, that's an extra, I, I dislike that so much, it's not even funny, so.
Is the, you have a percentage increase based upon all those, they're not all four-dollar increases, what is the, what's the largest, so like, I've got six kids, I'm putting in there?
That would be, that would, the before and after care would be the highest.
Okay.
Because that's the most that you can get.
Right, 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 right.
So four dollars would be the most per week increase.
Per child?
I mean, per child, yes.
So if you have six, that's-
Well, if you have two-
Yeah, they get an additional discount.
And to somebody that has the money, that's not a big deal, but I'm just telling you, a lot of our families are scraping by right now and trying to figure out how they're going to get through paying their mortgage.
A lot of those families are going to be in the century-
The Twenty-First Century, that is free.
Well, I'm just saying, that's my piece, if the board doesn't, doesn't agree or doesn't land it, that's totally fine, but I'm just saying, for me, that's where I'd be.
I would like to hear from Ms. Lysinski.
Yes, so, is this on? What I wanted to, and I, I'm going to mess this up a little bit, but GASB, an accounting practices, changed years ago. And why they're in this deficit or the fund balance is negative, and I'm not screaming, is because it's, it's an accounting change that happened, and it, the, the money is basically, I'm going to screw this up, I need to get my accountants out here, is that it has to cover their pension. But in reality, if we stopped having before and aftercare, we would not have to pay for the employees' pension. So that's why that funding is such a large, it used to be three million when I got here, the fund balance, now we're down to a million. So it, it's, it's not something that's making us hurt right now, because they're, you know, they, they made money, they made about, I think, three million dollars? And two transferred, that's something that when I got here was what they did. And I, you know, whatever we want to do, we would have to change how we budget. But I, I just want, I just don't want you to be worried about that negative fund balance.
I'm not, because I know where it's coming from, it's a transfer out, so it's, yeah, I mean-
Well, see, right, but it's also based on what we would have to pay, we're supposed to have a certain fund balance, what we'd have to pay for everyone's pension if we stopped before and aftercare. And in reality, that wouldn't, we wouldn't be paying their pension. So we don't pay their pension, it's the state, it's, it's a GASB rule, and it's very strange, I need to get an accountant out here to explain it to you. But this is the, this is, we're following the rules that they told us that we had to do for the books, and that's why you see such a negative.
So I, I hear what you're saying, you're concerned with the, and strongly dislike, I heard, I heard you loud and clear, the transfer out. I am still in favor of us making an increase, I, thank you for moving to next year, because at this point, it's middle of November, January's a little soon, so, but here's the reason why. Whether we, however we want to treat this entity, which is a business for the district, it, it is still providing, it will still provide, even with the increase, the cheapest cost. And all these, all these places, some of them have probably already gone up since, you know, she's done that, I mean, they, they can increase at what time? We, we have to stay within the realm, except for with our employees who get the drastic discount, and this is the only place they can get it. We have to stay within the realm of, of what's going on out there. And also, we are intending to continue to hopefully every year have an increase in wages for these employees. And just like food nutrition services, you know, we have food nutrition, when we do our raises, food nutrition services, they're, they're under the same bargaining unit, but they provide the money for the raise for the people who work for them. The before, before and after school, they need, that entity, that business entity, needs to provide the funding for the people who work in that enterprise.
Well, it's impossible if you're transferring out two-point-two million dollars for them to do that.
But it's, but if we stop doing that today, it's eventually that, that, it's, you know, where are we going to get the increase from?
If you are advocating for raising the rates in order to pay those people a higher wage and not taking two-point-three million dollars from them, I would say all day, I support that. But I, to me, it, there, I don't like anything to do with that, so for me, it's a hard no, but that may not be where the board lands, and I understand that, but I don't like that transfers out. That, that part really, really bothers me, we are asking our families, and I know it sounds very, very minimal, but you need to think about the grand picture of things, where people are scraping pennies together to get by. And that's the reality of what a lot of our families are going through, so.
Right, but again, the, our most struggling families, they're in this, those are the schools that have the twenty, I'm not saying anybody else is not struggling, even if they're not at a poverty level, which you, there's a requirement, a part, you know, economic requirement to get into those programs. I'm not saying they're the only people who are struggling, but again, this is still the cheapest game in town, and it still will be the cheapest game in town. And this is a business, and we have to run this part, like it or not, like a business. And that funding, like it or not, that was transferred out, is, is helping us take care of the needs of our schools, of our students, of our staff.
But is it though, because they just said it's not going back to the schools anymore?
The three million dollars comes to the district, and the district is providing services to our students, to our families, to our community, to our staff. We are doing that as a district, it may not be directly through the schools, and I'm not against, that's what I'm saying earlier, I'm not against us taking a look at what that might look like differently, but to say that that three million dollars isn't benefiting our community or district, it, it is, it is, because it's coming into the pot that is running this district, that we have to do, that we're doing well. So you may not like that we're taking it, but it's, it is doing good work for our communities. And, you know, and like I said, you have to, you know, I, in my mind, we're, we have to think about it as, as a business, this is a completely different entity from everything else that we do.
I think the question that we kind of may ask is, where does the two-point-two million, or the transfer, is it identified in a specific place, or does it just go to the bottom line and get reallocated?
So I get this question a lot, and I've been trying to find a way to answer this, I like analogies quite a bit. So we come, we, we budget what we think our revenue's going to be, so the FEFP, what are we, all the revenue that we expect from the, from the impact funds, from the transfer, from the transfers that we get for maintenance from facility, and we get all that revenue, and then we say, what are the expenses? Well, the expenses are the teachers, are the utilities, are the, what programs, all the different things that we need, and then we allocate money towards that. So if I were, I don't want to be insulting with this analogy, but if I were to say, you know, Mr. Susan, that check that you got from, I don't know, Aunt Suzie for fifty dollars, and you put it in the bank, where did that fifty dollars go, what did you use it for? I mean, it's part of your bank account, so, but we do, if, if we don't get, do the transfer, then we would have to budget for two million less, or three million less.
I think the, I think the, where we run into, and part of the conversation that we had wrapped around the supplements was, is that there's concern with the board about money going to the bottom line in some areas, just because we would like to see where that gets allocated, right? And some of the, when you sit there and look at over two million dollars being reallocated into the general fund, it's difficult to find out where that goes. And I think that that's the sentiment that I think is kind of mumbling, like, moving here, is not that it's not needed, we all know that the needs of the district are there. It's just we are actually creating an increase on our people that is then going to be allocated to us for a general fund that we don't have an allocation need for right now, does that make sense to you? But every year it changes.
I guess that doesn't make sense.
You don't have a direct allocation for the money that comes out of this aftercare, so by doing so, there's, they're just putting-
It's not designated.
They're just putting it into the general fund, is all it is, and it's difficult, and what-
But we don't have a whole lot of money sitting in the general fund, we were allocating all the dollars and all the requirements-
It's already been-
-to cover the expenses, and in many cases, sometimes the expenses are more than our revenues.
It's a whole nother conversation.
I, I'm trying to figure out a better way to explain this.
You don't have to, we, we're all agreeing, we all know where it's going. The only issue is, is that at the end of the year, two-point-something million dollars comes in, and then it just goes into the bottom fund, right? And then it's re-out-
You're absolutely right, and then we, we budget for that though, so we know that two million's coming in, and then we budget for that, so do we need more substitutes, do we need more teachers? So that's how we have additional dollars for the, the emergent requirements, well, actually, that's not even true, we're, we're using the revenue to cover-
Yeah.
-the actual expenses that we're projecting.
Imagine what it would look like if all the revenue that was generated from before and aftercare stayed with before and aftercare, you could pay the employees everything they wanted, you could have all kinds of things that were able to, to pour into it, as far as resources, computers, you know, field trips, things like that, that could happen.
Tutoring.
If tutoring, yeah, all those things could happen if it stayed where it's at. So when you say this is a business enterprise, whose business enterprise is this, BPS, or is this its own entity, the after-school care is the enterprise?
It's our enterprise, it's the board's enterprise.
The board's enterprise, and, okay, I, again, I'll tell you where I'm at, and that's, that's what I think, I mean, obviously, this year, we're already in the middle of it, I, I don't think changing it is advantageous right now. But for me, I would say no more transfers out to the general fund, and no more increases to our families, let's see what that looks like. I mean, I think you'll see that program thrive in a way that you would probably be blown away, so.
If I, go ahead.
So we approved this in the budget that we approved in September, it was part of it, part of the revenue for this year's budget is this transfer in, transfer out of VS, BAS, and transfer into the general fund.
Right.
So we, we've already had eyes on and approved that for this budget year that's going to end June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four. I just, when we talk about, we don't want to put it on the backs of the people, we just need to recognize that that two-point-two million dollars, two-point-three, whatever it is, if we take that out of the way we've been doing it, first of all, it's not all, it can't all go back into, because we have to keep a portion for the management of the program, okay? But also, we have to find, as a board, the staff has to find for us, how, what are we going to replace that? What are we going to cut, what two-point-three million dollars are we going to cut from our budget to make up for the two-point-three million dollars that we're losing? Because we are losing it, that has been counted on for years as this is part, this is one of our incomes, just like FEFP, and, you know, the sales tax, and now the millage, it's, it's grants, this is, you know, our IDEA budgets, this is food nutrition services, this is something that we've counted on. So if we're no longer, if we're going to say we don't want to count on this in the general fund anymore, then we have to find where we're going to cut two-point-three million dollars.
Yep.
And that can very likely be, you know, to use your term, on the backs of our families, it can be things that we're having to not provide as a district, because we don't have the funding for that, we had, we had to cut two-point-three million dollars in something. We'll have to make that decision, it's not an easy decision. But again, this is a business, this is, this is, this is not a, it is a service business, but it is a business. So I, I just, we just need to, as we move forward to whatever we're going to do, and if we, as a board, decide right now that we're not going to increase rates for next school year, I, I, I'm not ready to make that decision today, I think we need to have a further conversation of what that would exactly look like, where are that two-point-three million dollars, where it come from? Because board, we need to figure out what we're willing to let go of to cut two-point-three million dollars from the budget. Or we're going to have to decide right here in today, or whenever we make this decision, that when it comes time, budget time in the spring, that the first two-point-three million dollars of whatever the increase the state might give us, right off the top, that's going to go to replace this. So we've already, to me, in my mind, hamstrung ourselves, because we're already going to have increases, they're probably going to raise the FRS rates again, there's going to be other things that have to be doing. So, you know, when we get presented the budget, and like here, the state gave us an extra forty million dollars this year, well, then we have to pay eighteen million dollars extra in FRS, or whatever it may be, this is going to be part of that, and we have to take two-point-three million dollars off the top, because we wouldn't, we didn't, we were not going to take that of our after-school for next year. So we already reduced our, whatever increased revenue we will hopefully get this year by two-point-three million dollars. We just need to acknowledge that from the beginning, because that's what we're saying right now, is that we're going to take that increase and not put it towards raises for all of our employees, or any other things that we want to do, we're going to put it to replacing this income.
So what I feel and what I'm hearing is, obviously, there needs to be like a deep dive in a presentation of, of the things that have been discussed, because they're not simple answers. You can't just willy-nilly say we're going to do this or that with, with something that, that would make such a significant impact in either direction. that would make such a significant impact in either direction. The other thing, though, I just, I want to reiterate, um, and I'm not saying I'm against it, I, I think we need to be presented it, because I don't know enough of what the impacts would be. But to do that for this program, and then to, to ignore the fact that it is being taken from other ones, and required of other ones, you are gonna create an inequity and kind of a dysfunction across the district. So that's another thing that needs to be presented to us. Who else is paying us as a revenue source? Um, because again, like a, um, like a Head Start, or, um, uh, our VPK programs, things of that nature, who are pouring money back into us, it's kind of hard to argue which one has more value and which one shouldn't, should be forgiven. So, um, I think that that's something that needs to come forward as well.
Ms. Jenkins, can you, can you, you're saying that there are other aftercare programs and beforecare programs, like-
There are other enterprise.
So, right.
Enterprises and BPS. And so our VPK programs are paying the district as well, and they're struggling to operate within their, within their margin. So to, to do it for one and not for the others is also gonna be a really hard argument to make for those other areas that are gonna, are struggling just as much. So we just need to see the big picture of that decision, that, or if we make a decision, how is that going to impact the other areas that might hear that change?
Ms. Harris, you wanted to say something?
I just wanted to add, as the board continues to, you know, problem solve and think about next steps for this program, if we were to return to each school gets, um, you know, their profits, let's say, if we're treating this as a business in its entirety, if we were running grocery stores, um, if we had, uh, certain sites that were not making money, in the business land alone, those are shut down. So I, I just want us to, as we talk through this, understand that we do have several schools in that model that are not covered by the 21st Century Grant, because we apply for that, and some schools get it, and some schools don't. And, and I would say, in some cases, it is, um, some of the schools that typically get all the grants are not in that program. And so basically, um, how it's operated now is borrowing, you know, borrowing from Peter to pay Paul. And so we are able to run that as a business that way. If we were to go to solely a model where schools get their profits, we wouldn't, we would have to talk about, does every school have this program? Um, because there wouldn't be something to offset that funding to keep many of our programs alive. Because in, in other, you know, in a classroom, if I give a, you know, one more student to that classroom, we don't have to hire another teacher. But going back to the 26th, uh, student in a program, we have to have a whole nother adult. And so in the business model, we're looking at, how many children do we need to pay for that additional, um, model? And so for some of our schools, it's just not cost-effective, but we want to continue to provide this service to our community. It's something to think about.
So one of the, did you have something you wanted to say?
Yeah. That'd be great. I was gonna wait. Um, it obviously is, uh, evident that we're gonna have to take a deep dive into, uh, the conversations, and I'm glad Ms. Jenkins spoke up, because I think I can agree with something from all of us here, if we're gonna run this as a business. Some type of revenue sharing does sound like it makes a lot of sense. Uh, maybe not a, so, not 100% what Ms. Wright was saying, is no revenue sharing, but like Dr. Rendell had brought, or, uh, take back, or whatever that's called. Uh, but what Dr. Rendell had mentioned makes sense, too, is, you know, these other businesses, before and aftercare, they have to pay for a building, and they have to pay for electric. And so, um, we should be cheaper than them, because they, uh, they have to pay for supervision. And so some of that probably needs to go back to the district, but the, the revenue sharing sounds like a, a, a plan that I can look at a little bit there, because when you revenue share, and if it is a business, you want to reinvest those dollars. You talked about a waitlist. If, if that school had a surplus, um, maybe they could get rid of a waitlist, if they could hire another person, which then would increase revenue for that, for that school. Uh, use the grocery store. If I had people waiting in line, and, and, and I could buy more goods, I could actually create more revenue, because they could come in and buy more goods. So, um, maybe could help actually raise revenue if, if, um, ownership was involved. I, I, I know whenever there's ownership involved in a situation, um, you know, things seem to work out a little bit better. If that school had a little more ownership of the before and after-school program, would be, um, would be beneficial to all. But, um, but again, Ms. Jenkins brought up, there's other, any, other entities like this, um, and we're okay. We, we'll take each of them on its own, but, uh, I, I do believe, um, you know, we need to take a deeper dive into this. And, and, and for you to bring back some, some of your thoughts, you know, you're, you live this, and, um, I mean, it's a, it's a different board than, than previous years. Uh, we may decide to do things differently. And, um, I, I just appreciate you taking the time to, you know, bring this out, but, you know, this is something that we need to, um, take into consideration, and if we need to raise the rates, you know, you're, you're the one saying that it needs to be done, and I'm not against that as, as, uh, either. But, um, you know, to totally take away all the, all the money, I think we need to take a, a deeper dive into this. So.
Thank you, Mr. Trent. I, I want to remind everybody that we did this where we took the 2 million based upon the fact that our, our budget was decreasing, and then we never gave it back away. So at one point, we did not take the $2 million from, or the extra revenue. And not saying that we're not financially there right now, but what we end up doing in some cases is, we do these kind of things because there was a budget cut, or there was a budget situation, and then we never come back to it, right? So I want to remind everybody that we have been there before. Um, one of the questions I wanted to ask is, as you had spoken about capacity being limited based upon hiring individuals, there's a rev, there must be a ratio number of teachers to, what is, what, explain that to me.
25 to 1, um, for before and aftercare, the pay, the fee-based. It's just, you know, we have a certain amount of numbers.
Yep.
Say we have a waitlist, and we advertise, and we advertise, and we advertise, and, you know, the principals do the, the hiring, and, and when there's no one that applies, you can't hire anyone else, so you can't take off the waitlist.
And-
And there is, I mean, and it's typically like, in certain, you know, some schools, they may be a deficit of three people, and they're just continually trying to hire, and it's always a struggle, so.
What are those, and what are those hiring, besides, we know the general, right? The general is, is that we're just having difficulty across the board on all hiring. In this specifically, is it that those other entities are paying their people more, and we're losing them?
Well, and you also have to think, the hours are not great for an individual who's working, you know, you're either coming early, early, or like at 2 o'clock.
Sure.
And you don't get benefits if all that's all you do, you know? So sometimes we can get like cafeteria workers to stay over, and, and, and that would be an entire day where they would get benefits. Um, so there are some perks, but I, I believe majority is the hours. I mean, trying to find someone that'll come in at 2 o'clock and stay till, you know, 4:30, 5:30, you know, depending on the program.
Right.
I think that's the most difficult challenge.
And if we didn't have any of these vacancies, what would the, how many vacancies do we have, say, for instance? Are you aware of that?
I'm not, I don't know the exact number.
Like where the capacity, because we're sitting on like some of these waitlists, right? Might be 100 people long, which would mean that we would need four individuals to, to do that.
Correct.
But we don't know what those possibilities are. Um, and, and the only reason I ask that, it's a really like tough question for you to answer because of the anomalies. It's just that the revenue sources would go up considerably if we could hire those more people.
Correct.
But we're actually, okay. So what, what is the wage comparison to the other entities around aftercare?
Well, you're, you're also comparing to, now you gave bus drivers $20 an hour for those same hours. So they're driving those same hours, so we're competing there as well, because, I mean, I mean, yes, you need a certification to drive a bus, you know, a certain license, so maybe these people may not have it, but, I mean, if you're comparing at the same time, you're giving someone $20 an hour, and you're still with kids. I mean, both of them are still with kids, have to go through the same, you know, vetting process.
Sure.
But, so, it would be really great if we could use some of this to increase the wages to $20, to be, you know.
Honest. And have you ever done a market analysis of what the other entities are paying their people compared to what we do?
No, not for before and after.
I can say, just from experience of being inside of a lot of them, they're, they're either equal, or they're paying less, almost all of them. Some of, some of the brands are gonna pay higher, but majority are definitely paying less. They also have, as much as ours, um, timeframes are really limited, theirs are unpredictable sometimes. Uh, they could literally show up for work and be told to go home, because they don't have the numbers inside of that facility that day, and then they don't get paid that day. Um, so there's a, it's like kind of a weird, risky, unpredictable job to have when you're out in the community.
We've never done a market analysis of the wages of the other groups, and I understand that Ms. Jenkins says, because I've seen that also, that there's a perception that they may not pay them, but the actual, what are they paying them, might be a good one, because we're saying that we're charging a whole lot less, but we may be paying them a little bit less, if that makes sense.
And also, another thing to think about is, this enterprise also pays for the benefit for all our employees that utilize the program. I mean, the fund pays for that. It's, so, I mean, that's a huge benefit, I mean, for me, just personally. I mean, but think about all the employees that put their kids in this before and aftercare, so we can work our hours that we need to work. I mean, it's, it's a huge benefit, so, I mean, if you think about that-
So that 2.3 million dollars is actually going back into paying for itself, paying for this benefit.
Right, for, for, yeah.
So you're saying that because you're an employee of aftercare, that your kids can go there at a reduced rate?
Well, if you're, if you're an employee of an aftercare, you get free.
That's what I was getting at.
I'm talking about Brevard County Schools, we put that out as a benefit, like the district does. But BAS, the fund, the enterprise fund, covers that benefit.
Right.
Yeah. So, I mean, if you think about it that way, we are doing a great thing through BAS for our employees.
It's a significant discount for employees.
Yes. Oh, it is significant, I can tell you.
A lot of our employees take advantage of it, because why would you have a spouse pick up a student when you're sitting on the campus with your own student? It doesn't make any sense.
So everybody's aware, that was a huge contention fight that we were in, I forget how many years ago, where they were trying to increase the employee rate, and we held it, we held it low. And I appreciate you guys doing that. Um, so when I get back to the wages, I'm sorry to just keep harping, um, market analysis has never been done, so that we know that. Um, also, the hours are a little bit different, because there's a, uh, comparison there. All right. Um, what about the facilities? Is there a, I've gone to the aftercare, my daughter was in the aftercare, it's like, everybody's in the cafeteria, right?
Yes.
Um, is there a, do we have a capacity analysis that says, if we could max out the amount of kids for this school, this is the capacity? Have we ever done something like that?
No, and I don't think it's ever, because there are other rooms you can utilize.
Explain that. And I, and I appreciate this.
Like, for, like, just like the 21st Century, that pullout, there's, there's tutoring in that. So they'll be pulled out-
Good.
-at certain times for these kids to get tutoring in other classrooms. So there are other areas, just like if we have aftercare, looking at a plane, pay for aftercare, some of those, half the kids are at the playground sometimes, and half the kids are right outside doing something else, or, so there are other areas where you can not just like look at the capacity of just the cafeteria.
Sure.
So especially like if there's an event, like an after-school event, we ran into that, like the principal was using it for an after-school event for the parents, well, they were dispersed to somewhere else. So there is always, because the building is so large, there's always other areas that we can put those children.
So we're never maxed based upon the capacity of the school?
No, just by employment.
We're just maxed by the capacity of the employee.
Yes.
And we've never done a, an analysis that says that if we were able to hire this many based upon our waiting lists or anything else, that would be the revenue that could be brought in. We haven't done that.
Well, and I will speak to, uh, Dr. Mayer and I have only been working in the BAS world for a couple of months. So, um, prior to that, Dr. Ivory, and, and to give credit to Dr. Ivory, when Ms. Lizinski speaks to a $3 million deficit, that's what she walked into and alleviated a lot of that. So I don't want to say that that's never been done, that's never been done, to our knowledge, and I know Dr. Mayer has been working very closely with the BAS, uh, staff to learn as much as she can, but I just don't want to say that hasn't been done. We just are not aware of that.
Thank you.
It would probably, rather than a market analysis, I think it might be better to a historical, like, go back six, seven years, when we maybe didn't have as many vacancies, what was our capacity, then, you know, how, you know, and maybe, I, we probably have some BAS staff who were, you know, can find those numbers from that, you know, because if, when we, um, it's still harder now than it was, say, six, seven years ago, you know, how much was our capacity? We have our funding and everything, but we don't have our, like, our enrollment. And of course, our populations, it's not exactly apples and oranges, you know, I mean, apples to apples, because some school populations have drastically grown, some of our schools didn't exist, like Viera Elementary or whatever, but we can maybe see a little bit, like, what, how are we doing, uh, capacity-wise, previously, when we didn't have as many vacancies.
I, um, I don't think it's a bad idea to look at the wages, but, um, I, I feel confident in my assumption, but obviously, they're, it's not paid enough, it's not enticing, right? And then when you add in the fact that they're not working a maximum amount of hours, it's a really limited schedule, so if you're not paying enough of an hourly wage, it's really, really not tempting. But the other thing to consider, too, is just the facilities in which they're working with, compared to a lot of the ones that are out there within the community, um, some of them are not great to be inside of. I've been in almost every single one of them, I'm gonna be honest with you. Um, some of them are not good, that's all I'm gonna say. Um, and also, you're dealing with a different population of, of kids, an age group of kids, too. You're not dealing with potty-ing, or diaper changes, and things of that nature, too. So there, there are some variances when it comes to that. Um, but in order to entice people to come work a shorter day, I do agree, you're gonna have to pay them higher wages to get them to show up.
Okay, thank you. Um, so programs, let's talk about those. Some of those aftercare programs that we have, that we're partnering with, that have produced a, a pretty good, um, opportunity for us. Can you talk through some of those?
There's actually one, I think, on the meeting tonight, that's going to be trying-
Right.
-for approve. Um, there's chess, karate, um, there's anything that any person puts forth to, to do, any type of enrichment.
They come in, they partner with us, they give the opportunity for the kids to go to another location, whether that's off-site or there.
It's typically there.
Typically there. Because I know there's a friend of mine that ran karate and stuff like that. Um, and then those opportunities, rev share with the actual existing, come with us.
Yes, we make money off of them. They get their share, but we also get our share.
Okay. And are those based upon, like, how does a organization come to the, is that school by school? Like, they approach the school, or is that through the district?
It's more working with the coordinator.
Okay.
Ms. Jennifer Beletti, um, and she would, like, go through the vetting process.
Sure.
Um, and they contact her, and then she goes through the vetting process. Of course, they have to do fingerprints and all that, and get, um, s- solidified, like, as a vendor through the school.
Yeah, okay.
And then the students pay, so the students are paying, it's a fee-based.
It's a fee-based, yes.
If you want to do-
If I wanted to-
-at our after-school, you're gonna pay extra per week, whatever, and then that's week, whatever, and then that's one, one time a week, they're coming to the school and.
Yes.
So one of the things that I was looking at when we were speaking about this, how do we, like, rev share, do all these things, right? Like, because right now, what we do is we take it and it goes to the fund, and then it, you know what I mean, it gets allocated the same way it is. But I think there's a couple of ways to do it. One of the ways that you could do it is, is say, hey, here's historically where your numbers are, right here. This is your flat numbers. We haven't been able to penetrate that level, whatever it is. You have capacity, which you said, is inside of that school that is a little bit larger. You could tell the school, hey, if you're able to increase your capacity in your aftercare program past this percentage, you would be able to take a percentage of that home. That may be the way to do it. Because I have a feeling that, like, some of your Title I schools that are there, that may not have that aftercare component, like advertised, pushed by the faculty and staff, if there's an opportunity to do that, bring in some partners and stuff like that, we might be able to increase that and then allocate it. So kind of like a market analysis of, these five years, this is where they were, just like what Ms., I think it was Ms. Campbell you were asking for, to see where they were each year. I would say that that's, that's a good capacity, right? Like, you could set, capacity at Quest was X, capacity at Magna T was Y. If you guys go above that capacity, 50% of the income coming above that would go to you, 50% comes back. We make more money, that might be an opportunity to drive an increase, right? So what I would ask is that we do a wage analysis and do it by the areas outside. So not just, not just, like, it's very easy to pull all of the aftercare programs in the county and figure out the wages that they have inside. There's not, there's, there's businesses and stuff like that, we can figure those things out. I would also ask for a capacity analysis by school, to figure out, just like what Ms., I think it was Ms. Campbell, and I apologize, said that we could have. That way, it would give us a baseline of where we need to be. And then I would also, I think one of the things that we sometimes don't do is a survey to the employees to ask, what would it take to get more employees? Because they live it, right? They're right there, they're on the edge. And it may come back that the wages and the hours are the ones that need to be, and then we can get to work on creating that capacity and getting that done. So that would be my ask, and I really appreciate you coming and doing this. I know that this is not what you wanted to, like, you're in the middle of, oh my gosh, I'm like in this congressional questioning, but I appreciate it. What you guys do is phenomenal. And I've, I've gone to my aftercare programs a lot of times, and those coordinators are just busting at the seams without any help. And that is what drives me to say, let's figure this thing out and let's do it right.
Like you mentioned, a push to get the kids and things like that, we do that for the 21st century because they have to meet a certain quota of students to keep that grant. So those coordinators are constantly contacting parents, and parents, and parents. So I think maybe if we employed the same thing, like, maybe, hey, if you get 100% of this number, because we know this, like, let's just say 20% of your student body should be maybe before and aftercare.
Sure.
If you push that coordinator and say, hey, maybe there's an incentive, maybe we can, you know?
Like, one of the things that they've done in other school districts is they've partnered with, like, Boys and Girls Clubs After School. So they would come into the school, they would be one of those partners that you're talking about, they would have access to the children and be able to create that revenue source. That is a good opportunity to do those kind of things, because they're limited based on transportation and location, right? Like, every one of them has major arteries that are blocking kids from transferring across roads and everything else might be. So I appreciate you, thank you so much. I think the general revenue, the general gist of this group is, is let's pause on the increase, have a conversation, and come back to it. I think that that would get us to where we need to be, and then we could do it. So thank you, appreciate it. You did a great job, like, we didn't even prep you with any questions, and here we are, like, all these, so thank you. Ms. Harris, do you have anything?
Just about the charter, they are coming at 2 o'clock, so it is 1:30, so I don't know.
We got the $9,000s to get through, Ms. Harris. We got all kinds of stuff.
We just like to keep you well entertained. We got stuff today.
Mendel's laughing over there, you hear him? He kinda did it. He doesn't like those $9,000s. What I would ask everybody is, we're kinda, we have this Neola topic that I really wanted to talk about.
Can we do that and then take a break?
Well, that's what I was thinking.
Yeah, yeah.
I was thinking of that, and then we'd take $9,000s, give them enough time to come back and do it. Does that make sense to you?
And have, well, well, whenever, should we, like, kind of time-certain, let them start at 2, if they're gonna be here at 2? Because I don't want them to have to sit around till we finish the $9,000s.
No, I would say they go first before the $9,000s, right? And then, so, yeah, let's do that. But if I could have a Neola conversation come up, Ms. Dampier, is that you?
It's me.
Is that you, Paul?
Yeah.
What's up?
It's on your packet, you can see there. We were looking to implement Neola's actual policy revisions, all right? So if you do policy revisions the way Neola currently envisions, we do not do it that way. You're supposed to log into Board Docs and you do it online inside Board Docs. The problem is, you will not get the packet you get now. You will get, as the packet that we attach to this agenda item, the red line only. You would have to then look at our current policy for the current policy. So it's a simplified process for staff, they don't have all that. Also, you will see on one of, I think, page two, is a breakdown of where we currently are with all the forms and everything, and we're gonna simplify that to have, like, a cheat sheet chart, that's all the policies that are gonna be on your agenda, what was changed in them, so that you can just look at that one page, and that should help you as well, instead of having Form A, Form B, Form C, Form D, and flipping through different pages.
Right.
So that's kind of where we were looking to go. We need the board to kind of say, okay, good, because it's your process.
So it makes it, so let me get this straight, for clarification, makes it real easy for staff, makes it real easy for the board members, right?
As long as you guys are happy with getting there. I only look at the red lines when we go to the board, so that works for me?
No, I, I only, I have always, only ever looked at the red line, unless, unless something looks wonky, and then I'll go look at the clean copy and make sure that I'm reading it right. But we're, so, so basically, what we'll be getting is like what we've been doing. We'll, we'll get Neola's red line.
You're gonna get the red line copy only.
And then, then it will show the staffs, what they've done to redline it.
It'll have the staffs in there, and any, like, if Neola issues an update, it'll have Neola's update language in green usually, and then staff's red line changes if they're different than that. So if we added Brevard-specific language, you would see that redlined in there, along with Neola's update.
You also will get a cover sheet. You know, there's a example there, kind of a spreadsheet that says, Policy 9701.6, this is what our recommended changes are, that kind of thing. So not only will you get the red line version, which really, most of us just jumped to the red line version, because what's being deleted is crossed out, what's being suggested is now in red, and so, like, you can see what's being changed without trying to hold up a clean version versus the recommended changes versus red line, you're looking at one version. But you're also gonna get that cover sheet, so to speak, you know, that guiding document that says, this is what we're changing, kind of a summary of what the changes are.
Well, so it just, I just have two questions. So as we walk through the process, and, because, one of the things, like, if we make a change in a work session, and it's gonna come back to us, I always want to see those changes highlighted a different way.
Right, we can do that.
We still have the capability to do that.
You can still do that.
Yeah, they can be in blue or something.
And then, did we come up with a way to mark Board Docs to show this process that we've been reviewed?
Neola has, we just tell them, like, and they add a line on our policies, reviewed by board on, or reviewed on, and they put a date.
So they'll be able to do that?
They're already doing that right now, yeah.
Okay, fantastic.
I'm good with it.
Good?
I have a really important question. Why, why didn't we do this a really long time ago?
I don't know, I talked to...
Maybe back in the zeros, when we started a long time.
I talked to Neola a long time.
Now we're, like, done.
I talked to, no, we're only through the ones. Right now, we're on the twos, and so those working now will be able to do it quicker. But Neola said they've always let us stay the way that we were originally, because we were one of the first districts to adopt Neola in the state. So they never forced us into the new system.
They should. Yeah, that, that makes total sense, because every now and then, there's a department that does a policy a little bit different way, like, they scanned it in instead of uploading it or whatever, and then it's not searchable, and so this meet consistent, where everybody's doing it the same way, and...
And I'm sure Neola will be happy.
Yeah. So basically, it was a resource that was included in our contract that we just never took advantage of.
That's correct.
Okay.
So in speaking to that, we as a board decided that we wanted to take a look at moving to the Board Docs in general, right? So I don't remember if you guys remember, but on Board Docs, there's another option that we could have that would allow us to look at other school districts' policies. We had that conversation, and we gave Tammy, we gave Tammy direction to go find out about it, and then we had Tammy, you know what I mean, took another job, and there was all these other things on that. What I would like to do, if it's okay with you, is ask Paul to reach out to Board Docs and have them come in, do a little bit of a presentation on what the difference between us and Agenda Plus is. Because when we took on Agenda Plus, there were a lot of things on it that were supposed to work that still don't. So like, you were supposed to, I don't know if you remember, Ms. Campbell, we would vote, and it would show, you could vote at each one, you wouldn't have to say, all in favor, signify, you just vote, and then it shows the public what we voted on, rather than this...
And then we'd have to take a voice vote.
Right.
It only worked for a little while.
Yeah, so there's, and there's other things that Agenda Plus is inhibiting us on utilization of our policies and stuff like that. So what I would ask is, is if it's okay with you guys, to have him reach out and have them come back and do a presentation on it, because there's a whole lot more horsepower that we're not taking advantage of, because we're, we're cut off, that's all.
We may need to check out what our contract is with Agenda Plus, how much longer we have on it.
You always have about 60 days to get out of every contract in the district, so by the time.
That'd probably work with procurement, because that would be a procurement issue as well, so.
I, I would say that...
But yeah, we did work, we did look into the access, and it was gonna come at an additional fee for Board Docs. I remember.
Sure.
You asked about that, and I did look into it.
There's piggyback fees and piggyback contracts that we can jump on, there's, you know what I mean? If we wanted to move towards Board Docs and we didn't wanna, you know what I mean, go out to some lengthy procurement for six months, we can move in that direction. But I think it all starts with, let's have them give a presentation and see what they can do. You know what I mean?
I, I don't want to circumvent whatever lengthy process means, we're going through procurement in the proper way.
Well, there's, there's ways, no, it's not circumventing.
And if, hang on, because Paul just said a second ago, they did take a look at it, looks like it's gonna be, I, I don't love, I've used both, because we use Board Docs for FSBA. I, I don't love Board Docs so much that I'm willing to pay extra over Agenda Plus, because I would have to, you know, there are some things that we haven't used it, I haven't used it with, even with FSBA meetings, as far as a, I've used it in, like, a general way, but not as specifically as, like, what we use for Agenda Plus. I just want to take a little look, but I, I think we need to follow the proper procurement process and, and have them take a look. And if we want, because we're the end user of that, you know, sometimes when we have procurement, we have a committee of people who use whatever the product is gonna be, they get to sit on it. I mean, for Board Docs and Agenda Plus, that's us and all the people who, the staff who directly upload things, and we, I think we can have a more input, more fingers into that process, but I, we still need to go through the process.
I, I think the first thing we do is have a presentation, see what it is, and I did want to let you know that part of the process that we do on a regular basis is piggybacks and everything else through procurement.
I'm very aware of that.
Yeah, so it is part of the process, so it's not like it's outside of normal. So, all right, so if you guys are okay, we can take a break, and come back in a little bit, and then we should have the $9,000s in the presentation by charter. Did you need anything?
No, I'm good.
Okay, all right. Let's go take a break.
Welcome back, everybody. We have a charter school application that we would like to start with. Thank you for tuning in and coming back with us. I will say this may be the longest application that I've ever seen. I thank you for the thoroughness of this. This is great. The floor is yours.
Thank you for the opportunity to be here today. My name is Jane Neves, and I've been an elementary school teacher for 22 years. My experience includes working in charters, traditional schools, and private schools from the Northeast in New Jersey to California and Florida. And over the years, I've had the opportunity to work at school sites ranging from inner-city schools to suburban schools to even rural schools. I've dedicated these years not only to teaching but to building relationships with families and the staff. And I believe that there needs to be a supportive network for children. Having acquired a master's in administration and leadership certificates in multiple states... I'm sorry. I believe...I'm sorry. I've been striving to learn and work and support my school in administrative capacities and with colleagues, so outside of the classroom responsibilities. But I've sort of been pushing for admin for many years, but also maintaining my teacher vacation schedule, if you know what I mean. I've found a lot of joys and challenges and growth in this profession, and I do believe and we believe that this has led to sort of this moment. Having found other educators like Kaye and some others that we are working together, whom I now consider friends and colleagues, and who've had the same passion, we believe that we can create a model school with the vision that we share, which is what we will share with you today. Mrs. Stabile, who was our application writer, apologizes for not attending. We have two members that did not attend that are listed on our application. She is extremely sick right now with that flu that's been going around, but she has written many applications that were approved in Duval County. She's been consulted or edited others submitted in additional Florida counties. She's assisted in writing projects such as school grants, website content, and charter contract renewal. Mrs. Stabile holds a master's. She has science in teaching English and as a second language from the state of University of New York in Albany. Also, a master of business administration from Kaiser University in Florida and a bachelor of science in journalism from the University of New Hampshire. And so she's been supporting us through this process early on, both as the writer and you can see, it's pretty comprehensive. She tries to dot all of her i's and cross her t's. She does care deeply about helping us effectively communicate our unique vision for the school.
Thank you again for this opportunity. Can you hear me okay? Okay. My name is Kaye Hardwood. I am in a unique position to be on this school board, having come from 30 years of being in the classroom and in pseudo-administration roles throughout my career. And so I started out in Riverside in Poway, California. I've taught in Suffolk, Virginia, and I landed here in Jacksonville, thanks to the U.S. Navy. I earned my National Board Certification back when I was in California, and what that did for me, I found the best benefit that was, was while we were traveling with the Navy, I was able to get a job pretty much anywhere we landed. And so I was pretty grateful to that and the experiences that being a Navy wife had afforded me. I earned a master's degree in curriculum and instruction, which I get to use now as a curriculum supervisor. I have also been a dean. I have been an instructional coach. I have been a reading interventionist, and I've been in the classroom for over 25 years. Delighted to be on the school board with Orion Schools. And like Jane mentioned, we are a coming together of like-minded individuals, which is pretty rare. You wouldn't think so in education, but it can be pretty rare. But we have a passion for children, and we have a drive to do what is right by children and by teachers, and we are just excited to be a part of a school board starting something new. I'd like to also mention our third school board member. Her name is Jade Oliver. She is not able to be with us today because she's actually working and she's in the classroom today, but I'd like to share with you some information about her. Her career began as an elementary teacher in Broward County, and for the past 23 years, she's taken on a variety of roles in public, charter, and virtual education. Ms. Oliver has taught English, history, and science at the middle school and high school level, so she balances us out. Jane and I are primary teachers, and Ms. Oliver is a high school counterpart. She has a passion for diverse student populations, and so she actively sought out teaching opportunities in the exceptional student programs, including gifted and ESOL. Other roles included support facilitation, reading interventionist, and instructional coach. So we all have had leadership roles within our schools that we've worked at. Ms. Oliver is passionate about the development of a whole child. She's established numerous arts and music programs in public school settings to give students the opportunity to develop their talents in their school communities through participation in classical ballet, jazz, modern dance, theater, marching band, and auxiliary. She's a busy gal.
Thank you. So we're going to go ahead and just sort of do the presentation based on... Can you hear me? Usually my voice carries.
Well, they're recording, so...
Oh, okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you. Orion Charter Schools is dedicated to providing a safe, engaging, and rigorous educational setting to the families in Brevard County, one where all students and their families feel that they're a part of a community and where teachers and staff can work closely together, meet challenges, and grow as professionals. As a board of educators, our vision is based on years of experience of what teachers and students face daily in the classroom. Currently, many teachers, both new and experienced, are leaving the profession. We want to provide teachers with an environment that is sustainable for them to continue in their careers. Our goal is to retain a high...you know, maintain a high percentage of highly qualified teachers and administrators, and we plan to attain this by creating the type of environment that dedicated teachers want to work and stay in, and also while having opportunities to develop their skills and strategies for teaching all different types of learners. You know, there's a lot of burnout that we've been seeing with teachers and administrators, and so this is part of our, you know, passion is to like see it from...if we can sort of see something from our perspective that's sustainable and supportive, that would obviously match other educators likely. In addition, our administrators will have an effective model for teacher evaluation, so they may...
Welcome back, everybody. We have a charter school application that we would like to start with. Thank you for tuning in and coming back with us. I will say this may be the longest application that I've ever seen. I thank you for the thoroughness of this. This is great. The floor is yours.
Thank you for the opportunity to be here today. My name is Jane Neves, and I've been an elementary school teacher for 22 years. My experience includes working in charters, traditional schools, and private schools from the Northeast in New Jersey to California and Florida. And over the years, I've had the opportunity to work at school sites ranging from inner-city schools to suburban schools to even rural schools. I've dedicated these years not only to teaching but to building relationships with families and the staff. And I believe that there needs to be a supportive network for children. Having acquired a master's in administration and leadership certificates in multiple states... I'm sorry. I believe...I'm sorry. I've been striving to learn and work and support my school in administrative capacities and with colleagues, so outside of the classroom responsibilities. But I've sort of been pushing for admin for many years, but also maintaining my teacher vacation schedule, if you know what I mean. I've found a lot of joys and challenges and growth in this profession, and I do believe and we believe that this has led to sort of this moment. Having found other educators like Kay and some others that we are working together, whom I now consider friends and colleagues, and who've had the same passion, we believe that we can create a model school with the vision that we share, which is what we will share with you today. Mrs. Stabile, who was our application writer, apologizes for not attending. We have two members that did not attend that are listed on our application. She is extremely sick right now with that flu that's been going around, but she has written many applications that were approved in Duval County. She's been consulted or edited others submitted in additional Florida counties. She's assisted in writing projects such as school grants, website content, and charter contract renewal. Mrs. Stabile holds a master's of science in teaching English and as a second language from the state of University of New York in Albany. Also, a master of business administration from Kaiser University in Florida and a bachelor of science in journalism from the University of New Hampshire. And so she's been supporting us through this process early on, both as the writer and you can see, it's pretty comprehensive. She tries to dot all of her i's and cross her t's. She does care deeply about helping us effectively communicate our unique vision for the school.
Thank you again for this opportunity. Can you hear me okay? Okay. My name is Kay Hardwood. I am in a unique position to be on this school board, having come from 30 years of being in the classroom and in pseudo-administration roles throughout my career. And so I started out in Riverside in Poway, California. I've taught in Suffolk, Virginia, and I landed here in Jacksonville, thanks to the U.S. Navy. I earned my National Board Certification back when I was in California, and what that did for me, I found the best benefit that was, was while we were traveling with the Navy, I was able to get a job pretty much anywhere we landed. And so I was pretty grateful to that and the experiences that being a Navy wife had afforded me. I earned a master's degree in curriculum and instruction, which I get to use now as a curriculum supervisor. I have also been a dean. I have been an instructional coach. I have been a reading interventionist, and I've been in the classroom for over 25 years. Delighted to be on the school board with Orion Schools. And like Jane mentioned, we are a coming together of like-minded individuals, which is pretty rare. You wouldn't think so in education, but it can be pretty rare. But we have a passion for children, and we have a drive to do what is right by children and by teachers, and we are just excited to be a part of a school board starting something new. I'd like to also mention our third school board member. Her name is Jade Oliver. She is not able to be with us today because she's actually working and she's in the classroom today, but I'd like to share with you some information about her. Her career began as an elementary teacher in Broward County, and for the past 23 years, she's taken on a variety of roles in public charter and virtual education. Ms. Oliver has taught English, history, and science at the middle school and high school level, so she balances us out. Jane and I are primary teachers, and Ms. Oliver is a high school counterpart. She has a passion for diverse student populations, and so she actively sought out teaching opportunities in the exceptional student programs, including gifted and ESOL. Other roles included support facilitation, reading interventionists, and instructional coach. So we all have had leadership roles within our schools that we've worked at. Ms. Oliver is passionate about the development of a whole child. She's established numerous arts and music programs in public school settings to give students the opportunity to develop their talents in their school communities through participation in classical ballet, jazz, modern dance, theater, marching band, and auxiliary. She's a busy gal.
She is a busy girl. Thank you. So we're gonna go ahead and just sort of do the presentation based on... Can you hear me? Okay. Usually my voice carries.
Well, they're recording, so...
Oh, okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you. Orion Charter Schools is dedicated to providing a safe, engaging, and rigorous educational setting to the families in Brevard County, one where all students and their families feel that they're a part of a community and where teachers and staff can work closely together, meet challenges, and grow as professionals. As a board of educators, our vision is based on years of experience of what teachers and students face daily in the classroom. Currently, many teachers, both new and experienced, are leaving the profession. We want to provide teachers with an environment that is sustainable for them to continue in their careers. Our goal is to retain a high...you know, maintain a high percentage of highly qualified teachers and administrators, and we plan to attain this by creating the type of environment that dedicated teachers want to work and stay in. And also, while having opportunities to develop their skills and strategies for teaching all different types of learners. You know, there's a lot of burnout that we've been seeing with teachers and administrators, and so this is part of our, you know, passion is to like see it from...if we can sort of see something from our perspective that's sustainable and supportive, that would obviously match other educators likely. In addition, our administrators will have an effective model for teacher evaluation, so they may monitor, support, and provide feedback promptly, ultimately by building an environment that supports teachers to continue to learn and grow as educators and within state statutes. Because when teachers feel supported, students are more successful. Creating a sustainable work culture that keep these teachers, both new and young and experienced, in their profession will significantly benefit both the teachers and the school community as a whole. We will utilize teacher evaluation systems offered through the Florida Consortium of Public Charter Schools. Another strategy for retaining teachers is providing effective enriching professional development from supporting teachers in acquiring additional endorsements to comply with state's requirements, such as the reading endorsements, ESOL endorsements, and also in providing ongoing trainings and workshops in cooperative learning and project-based lesson planning, which you'll see as per the application. Another essential area of professional development is in designing curriculum and instruction for EL population. Teachers will have training and time during their PLC collaborations and share best practices regularly. One thing that I know that I've been privy to, and I think, you know, we've talked about this, is a lot of times you'll get trainings, it's a one-and-done, you're supposed to like figure it out and switch gears and do that. And so what I've found over many years is those continual, consistent trainings and follow-through and access to the people that are your trainers is the kind of thing that can really embed a new program in a school. And so that is something that would be, you know, ongoing, not just quickies, not just check-the-box, but actually like, that's a big one for us. Again, so those PLC collaborations, that helps with that model. Timely access to data from state and other assessments will help teachers drive their instruction and support students in real time. The decision to apply to Brevard is based on a few different rationales. First, our STEAM focus lines up with the space program and technology in Brevard County. This will facilitate community outreach to businesses and organizations that correlate to Orion's school program, establishing partnerships in the area, and plan to utilize the community partners in different capacities such as field trips, you know, guest speakers, resources, and whatnot, and just try and connect with those. And hopefully, all of that helps and enrich students' learning and engagement. Secondly, our hope is to find a location where we could team up with an existing preschool or VPK program. This would provide an already-existing school community from which we could build our program. Sure enough, we found a great opportunity with a property that was tied to an already-existing, you know, preschool community. This would not only provide the physical space for the new school, but will give the currently-enrolled families an option to continue on at their school site. So this would also benefit if you have, you know, younger siblings coming in and that whole dilemma of, I have to take my one child here and pick up my other child there and all of that, that this would help build a stronger school community for the families. There's a strong correlation between the quality preschool education, student academic success. As they say, "Goals for Improving Student Learning" shows that students who attend preschool are more likely to be academically successful, so we're hoping that having a tie to this preschool will build on that. This is why we're hoping to build an extension of this pre-existing school. There's been a keen interest from those families in continuing at their school site as their children enter kindergarten and on. Last, we are looking to create a smaller program to provide this option for school choice in an area where elementary schools have high population in kindergarten through fifth grades. And some people really enjoy the smaller class, smaller vibe, you know? Our current governing board is a nonprofit organization established as a founded board, but we will move into a governing body when the school, if the school becomes operational. Governance change through the Florida Consortium of Public Charter Schools will be mandatory for all board members. As we've already discussed, we have three members. We are planning to recruit additional members with the expectation that they would have experience in education or some way of serving students and families. Of the many duties and requirements outlined in the proposal, some include serving on school advisory, hiring committee, and adopting a conflict resolution policy. So these are all things that we plan to have in place amongst many others that you'll find listed in that gigantic application, but before hiring, the hiring process begins. So we also will be there to report on student achievement once we get operational and things get going, and identify differences between projected and actual student performance, reporting on revenues and expenditures to ensure schools' ability to meet its financial obligations, and report on the state of facilities and how they meet standards based on student population and, of course, safety protocols. Our board is not looking to micromanage, but rather be strategic, a supportive entity, and reliable for the administrators and the staff that gets put in place there, and accessible. I just want to add that. Through marketing and job postings, our board will seek to attract administrators and teachers that are highly motivated and excited about joining and helping to create this unique student-centered program. We're truly grateful for the opportunity to present this new educational model and very much hope that we may serve the families of Brevard County and staff.
Okay, I want to talk a little bit about our educational plan, and our theme for the 24-25 school year is "Full Steam Ahead." And our educational plan involves literacy-rich classrooms, an authentic project-based STEAM emphasis, professionals committed to a nurturing and welcoming and effective learning environment, differentiated instructional strategies designed to meet the needs of all learners, PLCs for educator growth, again, as an example for our students growing in their capacities. Teachers as well have an opportunity in PLCs to learn and practice their craft. And inclusion of curricular activities and wraparound care is just a start to meet the needs of our families, to meet the needs of the community. So literacy education, our plan is meant to inspire high levels of student engagement, leading to high achievement. As a foundation of all learning, language and literacy is the core component of a strategic curriculum from us, laying that path for learners to progress through all the stages of literacy. Our educators will demonstrate a commitment to the implementation of our excellent CKLA Language Arts Curriculum, high-quality and frequent communication with families, and providing additional support and instruction for students who may be struggling. Our aim is to develop proficient readers who are capable of critical thought, as well as excellent communication skills to share their creative ideas. Secondly, the cornerstone of our school is based in STEAM, the Science and Technology Engineering Arts and Mathematics. We plan on running a multidisciplinary approach where learners think critically and act creatively to solve problems and find solutions. The real world enters the classroom daily, and the learners can use their growing context in science and art and mathematics and technology to build, create, bounce ideas off of each other, learn from each other, ask questions of experts from the community, making attempts, reflect, go back, and try it again. The authentic learning model and a project-based learning approach is really foundational to us as a school board, where the rigor and the engagement where students are able to take risks and take ownership of their learning, that just really ramps up the educational experience at our proposed school. We want to grow their confidence. We want to grow students' self-esteem. We want students to learn to communicate and collaborate, to see a task through. These are all skills that have a basis in applications for their future. The environment of the school naturally needs to foster and nurture and encourage collaboration and risk-taking. Our aim is to create this school culture. Collaboration, a key skill for learners, also permeates the expectation of the professional staff. And here again, come in the PLCs, where teachers and staff and administration as well communicate and collaborate together in order to grow their capacity to encourage learners in authentic learning and project-based increase. It's not an easy thing to learn how to do. It's not a one-year goal achieved. It's a five-year plan. And so engaging in PLCs and learning and perfecting the ability to implement an authentic learning-based model, a project-based instructional strategy does take practice, and it does take time. And we want to give our teachers and our professionals that opportunity to perfect that craft. There may be a need to support those who are struggling, and for some, may be in need of more evaluations, to provide additional learning environments to be more successful, such as an ESE program or a gifted program for students. Educators would also support each other in the implementation of curriculum, collaborative structures, creating that village where everyone feels supported and safe and trusted. Families are a key component of our vision for our new school, including families that are fully supported with additional extracurricular activities and events, free and reduced-cost meals, and in any way that families can communicate to us, the school board, and to the staff at our school, the needs that they need to be met. We want to be open to hearing that. We want open communication with families so they feel part of the school community. Our frameworks for the curriculum include an instructional designer intended to prepare learners for the future, and they will have to play a role in contributing meaningfully to their family and to their school and to their community, to their state, to their country at large. And technology would be used and implemented in a safe and responsible manner. Instructional models and strategies would foster inclusion, communication, sharing of ideas, and clear, explicit knowledge building where needed. Say that two times. Parent involvement and inclusion of experts from the wider community and input from professionals at the district level are strategies that model for learners that school is not a closed classroom, a grade-to-grade environment. All I need to do is promote to the next grade, that's why I'm here. But this is a collaboration of the students and adults in this building who have a stake in all people achieving growth and success for the future. Differentiation and instructional models to engage young humans of varying abilities will be employed to promote inclusion and equality and meet the needs for all. Accountability for knowledge and skills applicable to the future world is essential, and we do plan on participating with the wider community of state-mandated assessments and district requirements for progression and promotion. We, as a board, we have a lot of confidence stemming from a lifetime in education and working with educational communities, and we're gearing up to prepare our little corner of Brevard County for the future. We're pleased to offer students and educators a new approach to learning, a new place to belong, a great place to grow, and become the best version of themselves. And so we're super excited to be here, to speak with you, to have this opportunity to introduce ourselves, and we're entering the next school year full steam ahead. Thank you again for allowing us this opportunity.
Thank you.
Okay, board members, does anybody wish to ask any questions? Okay, Ms. Campbell first.
I'm gonna ask some basic questions that are probably answered in the booklet, but I haven't got a chance to look at it yet because it's been about three years since we've had this kind of presentation of a new charter school, so, you know, we didn't get a heads-up.
It takes two weeks to go through it.
Right, 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 right. So yeah, so just some basic things. And I didn't write them down, or I wrote them down as I came to me. So you are talking about starting next school year, projecting, and about how many students you think you'll have capacity for?
So I don't have the paper, it was right in front of me. You do? Okay. It's starting with...so the proposal is, and the projection is, that it would have just K through second grade, four classes of kinder, four classes of first, and three of second.
Okay. And then you would just add a grade every year?
Yes, exactly.
Going up to sixth or going up to eighth?
Fifth.
Just through fifth grade? Okay. You do know, in Brevard, you can do whatever you want. In Brevard, our model, we, all of our elementary schools go up to sixth grade.
Okay.
We're like the only place left in Florida that does it that way.
I kind of like that, yeah.
Yeah. So just something to consider. You have a location. You said you were wanting to attach to a current pre-K-VPK, so I heard something, you might be in the north end of the county.
It's in Titusville.
Okay.
And it's an existing pre-School VPK program, and so they have a couple hundred students. They've been there for a few years, and it's...so they would be part of that, like, they would be separate, but they're already existing there. So that was part of the whole thing.
Sharing space.
Sharing space, but marketing with those families and hopefully being an option to help the families grow and stay there.
I have some questions about your board. So the board currently of directors for this would be the two of you plus the one that you shared with us. How many schools are you currently governing? Is this your first foray?
Yes, yeah.
And so you don't have anybody local? Everybody, you are all out of Jacksonville?
Correct.
Correct?
St. Augustine, yeah.
Who, do you already have plans to make...because, you know, every county's different. We're very different from Duval.
Yeah.
To get local? I guess, for lack of a better way of saying that.
Well, definitely looking at, you know, trying to...because we want to increase our board.
Right.
And have just more heads, more, you know, more brains working. And so, yes, that is a primary thing, is to find, have someone down here. And we have, like, a couple people that we're affiliated with have some connections down here already, so we are absolutely looking to have that be part of the board.
Okay.
And then, of course, staffing and administrators.
Gotcha.
So the school in essence, be from here.
Do you plan to use a management company?
Yes.
Yes. Do you already have the name, which management company?
I believe it's Keystone.
Okay. Thank you.
But that's...yeah.
And it's providing...some of our charter schools provide transportation, some of them don't? Is that part of your plan to provide transportation?
I don't believe transportation is included.
Okay. Only like two of them do. Sorry, I've just got a couple more board...oh, this, actually, this last one. Charter schools are taking, you know, on the task of having kind of a unique take on education, so if I'm gathering from what you said, it's gonna be STEAM-based and then project-based learning. The PLCs, I'm gonna say, is not unique necessarily. No. Because a lot of our schools also do that.
Yeah.
As well. But is that, am I gathering that right, that that project-based learning, and we also have schools that do STEAM too?
Right.
But, you know, that's the main thing that's gonna set you apart?
Yes.
Okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Trent, did you have any questions?
Not at the moment.
Okay. Ms. Jenkins?
And again, just to reiterate what Ms. Campbell said, didn't have an opportunity to look at that, so I apologize.
No, it's okay.
You mentioned really briefly about ESE services. Is that...can you explain to me a little bit about how you would handle that if you have a student, since you're starting with such a small population, and how that would be staffed, how it would be assessed in that manner?
What's that?
The full MTSS process would be the responsibility of the principal, of course, but all those programs would be in place, all those...all the organizational flow of that process, as well as the people involved on staff. I think we're anticipating there's going to be one, it's like 1.5. The numbers come out to decimals, but two people. Based on the population of the schools in existence in the area around our location, so those people would be in place, the MTSS process would go through, but I believe that we would go through Brevard County as far as what protocols Brevard County has in place. The assessment and the evaluation is done by Brevard County professionals. I think we would team up very closely with the county to have the ESE process or the gifted evaluations done for our student population.
You don't have to say this publicly if you don't want to for any reason, if it's in the packet. I mean, I guess, I don't know, it's up to you if you want to say it, say the name or not, but do you mind sharing what the location is, or is it in the packet and I'll just read it?
It's in there.
It's the...
Ray, not, what is it called? Ray?
Knox McRae.
Knox McRae.
Knox McRae, 1923 Knox McRae.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Okay, I have a few questions for you guys. So you're out of Duval County. Let me ask you, why Titusville?
So basically, because we...so, again, based on the vision and sort of how we were expecting to sort of grow, is that we wanted to find an existing, you know, location that would have space. So it was like, you know, we wanted to have families that are already in place, a little bit of a school community stemming from a VPK community, and that was where this came from. And then with the availability of the property, that was what we were looking for. And so, basically, so that we could grow from and not just...I mean, not that we're attached to them.
Right.
But that they already have an existing community of families, and so, you know, the hope being that we can build those relationships, and so some of those families want to continue on. They already have a place within that school area, the school site area, and it's a large property, so they have, like, there's a couple different opportunities for the schools there of how they would break down the logistics of the school.
And if I'm understanding correctly, this site location was a previous charter with Brevard County. Is that correct or no?
Yes.
Okay.
We just found that out.
We just found that out, yeah.
Okay. All right. So is there any affiliation with the previous charter or anybody else in the board there?
No, we literally...
in the board there?
No, we literally just found that out.
Did you?
A few hours ago.
Like, we just went down there and, yeah, we just checked in on them to say hi and introduce ourselves. And so, yeah, we, we actually did not know that, but this is, like, Orion just literally started, we just named the school together, we're, we're all been in the classroom until pretty much, like, she's, you know, still full-time.
And in fact, I think that was when, when we, we found out about the previous charter school there, I'd like to look that up, I'd like to find out who that was and see why, yeah.
Okay.
Why that did not work out.
Yeah.
I'd like more information about it myself.
Okay, and is there any type of construction that needs to be done? I see that you guys have secured financing for, I believe, our startup loan, looks like an amount of $300,000 or something is what it says in here, correct? Is that right?
Yeah.
Is there any type of construction you need to build out the location to your needs or no?
Not, not to that current space, you know, certain things that we would appreciate to do, facelift a little bit, you know, that kind of thing, but the, the space, logistical space for the students is, it's already there.
Okay, and as far as permitting or anything of that nature, would you need to work with the city of Titusville? I'm guessing not if you don't have construction, so it's already got.
I don't think so.
I think, I believe so, I don't know those details.
They are currently working on their, their playground space because there's now been building, where they did, where they do currently have a playground, there's going to be building there, so that might be one piece that was unanticipated, that they may have to move the, the playground, so that's what the gentleman was saying, Mr. Jenkins, so like, on the other side.
Okay.
So, that would be the one piece that we might have to be involved in.
Would that be included in your construction?
Well, I'm just, I'm just wondering if you've worked with the city of Titusville at all, I'm, I'm a north-end person, so I just wondered if you had worked with them at all when it comes to, you know.
If it's anything like St. John's, yeah.
Yeah.
We'll be, we'll be, we'll plan in advance.
Okay. All right, and it looks like your startup, your projected time you're looking is next school year, is that right?
Yeah.
Okay, have you guys started recruiting yet at this point to see like what the interest is? I saw something in here about possibly having community meetings in October, kicking it off, have you started looking at that yet?
Mostly just from, mostly from the interactions from the existing VPK program.
VPK.
And that there is a lot of interest there, because like I said, a lot of the families are dealing with, you know, trying to get there, and they have an aftercare program, so they, they have kids that come over on vacations when the school, you know, when the district schools are closed, those kids are there, so there's some kids that they, they've had keen interest from the families, and then that would be part of our marketing, you know, come.
Have you guys ever looked at starting a charter prior to this or no?
It's always been a dream.
It's a dream, okay.
It's always been a dream. I've worked in start, I worked in a startup charter.
I have too.
And so, she.
We've started charter schools, but they weren't ours.
Okay.
We weren't like this part, like on paper, it was like there was already a building.
This is so much paper too.
There's so much paper there. Wait, I didn't write that.
Yeah, thank you.
But I read every last word.
And like what my fellow board members have said, transparency, we haven't had a chance to go through this entire thing.
Of course, that's fine.
So, quite a bit of reading material, but I'm sure as this progresses, we will get our eyes on every inch of it, so, appreciate it, thank you.
Absolutely.
Have not been able to look at it, so.
We're also going to be back in December.
For the capacity interview?
For the capacity interview, so, it'll give you.
We'll know even more then.
I know. We're all new to this.
I think one thing that we did really take away from our visit to the school today, when we stopped by there on the way down here, was that the, the people that have been running that school have a very well-established connection to this neighborhood and to the families in this community, and they really have a lot of integrity about what they're hoping that they're working with, and I think that that's something, we connected with them a little bit and just sort of were like, I think that that's, it's a really interesting piece, that they have a very close-knit community that trusts, you know, and that's something that we want to be, we want to be trustful, trusting.
We want to be worthy of their trust if they're going to be recommending.
And that it would be family, you know, very family-oriented, easy communication, and like if they have little ones in right here, and then our little bigger ones, which are not that big because they're in kinder and first and second, you know, it really should be more of a family-oriented piece.
So, if I may ask a couple of questions, you already had mentioned the students, I can get that number based on the number of classrooms. Your growth plan is, is that you'll eventually get up to fifth grade, possibly sixth, because that dives in with us as you go. Is there enough room at that location to do that?
They had, they had K through six before, but a part of the building is being used for the, it, it's not big enough, I don't think, to go all the way.
So, you might grow as you go.
Well, there's a, oh, sorry, go ahead.
There's additional space in the building that, that our developer is willing to expand and, and put walls in and facilities.
Twenty-five thousand square feet.
I saw that number in there. School security, like, there was a whole section in there, do you guys want to kind of go through that? That's a big topic around here, what, how you guys do that?
School security, I, I believe the, the back office organizer is going to, is going to handle that, but from what I know of how that is going to work is a series of guardians will have, will be on campus to provide boots-on-the-ground type of security. I'm not sure about the details, but at the very least magnetic doors, security entry, key, key magnetic release, in ID cards, all doors locked except for, you know, magnet release type of exit. At the very least, security cameras everywhere, if we know anything about that, security cameras everywhere. And I think that would be the very basic piece, I can get more information about that specifically, but I don't know that when the building is not completely built out yet, they may, they may not know exactly where, like, I can't tell you where the cameras would be placed and things like that, but.
And our security will work with your security and everything else. I was just partially asking for my own curiosity, but then also you'll have your parents ask the same thing, that's all, so, as you're going through it.
And we would definitely meet any standards that Brevard County wants to have, you know, we would match or exceed that as well.
Absolutely. And then there were some questions, they, you had said that one of you lived in St. Augustine, one lived in Jacksonville, you didn't plan on moving down at all?
Not us particularly.
Okay.
So, it's just, as the board members know, not us particularly.
But you guys have an affiliate that's going to work with some of our local people to choose some local?
Right, we would like to bring more people, you know, we can't run all this with three people, so we would like to definitely bring on more people onto the school board, but we'd like to open and, you know, invite people from Brevard County.
Yeah.
To join our school board, so.
Do you know how many you're going to plan on putting on your board eventually?
Five to six.
Five to six, okay, probably five to seven. Okay, and then do you guys, is there a time that you guys plan on being at location? Like, is this something that you guys like wake up in Jacksonville and drive down, are you guys going to spend like every day, every other day, once a week? What's your plan there?
For the school, for school board meetings?
Uh, no, for the actual management of the, like, are you guys going to be on-site every day or are you guys?
We're going to hire an administrator, and we're going to hire those people, so as the board, basically, we're not going to do that, but do we, you know, is the intention? Yes, absolutely, because.
Be involved as much as possible.
Especially early, we were just saying, like, maybe we can get a house, it's really nice down here, but like.
I saw your energy, I can tell you guys are excited.
It was really, we just love the area.
Yeah.
But, you know, again, you know, the school board is supposed to be somewhat removed from the operations and the day-to-day functioning of the school and things like that.
Don't tell us that.
We're, we're holding ourselves, we're holding ourselves back. Would we like to be involved as much as we're invited to? Absolutely.
Yeah.
But our primary role would be to hire an administrator and his, you know, and help him with his team of staff to make sure that the outreach to the community is satisfactory.
You guys probably, I, I looked through it and I was trying to find it, there's usually like a budget breakdown, like, you know, okay, you get $8,000 for FTE, how much its breakdown is. Do you know, so, the management company, Keystone, are they coming in and turnkey, they're going to provide the furniture, take over the lease, provide the salary, like, it's turnkey Keystone, or is those, are you like signing a lease with a different company, you're signing it with that man, do you understand what I mean? Like, is there a real estate lease that is separate? Is the ordering of all of the facilities and, you know, chairs, tables, all that separate, and then the management company separate? One of the things I've seen in some of our charters is when they're all connected, it becomes some sort, it's a little bit different of a taste, you know what I mean? That's all. Can you give any insight in that?
I, I don't know.
I don't know exactly, I can't answer your question specifically, I know that, you know, what I'm gathering based on the conversations that we've had, and we haven't, I think, gotten to that point because.
Okay, maybe preemptively.
Yeah, it's brand new.
I'm asking ahead of time.
And I wish Mrs. Stavil was here because I'm sure she could answer that, because it's probably somewhere in that binder, but is that, is that those, those expenditures are allotted for already, so that those, those costs are? I would be curious, on your take, you sort of said like.
Yeah, is that a benefit when you have them?
No.
Okay, not a benefit.
Because as a governing board, you want to try to create an anomaly where you can get to the bottom of each one of the prices, and we've seen in some cases where the real estate leases and stuff like that, if they're run by certain entities like the management company, and I'm, please, don't tell me, like, I'm not trying to.
No, it's informative.
The problem is, is that they'll start paying two to three times with the going rate, they'll charge you two to three times with the going rate is per square foot for a lease in that area, and then what they'll do is, is they'll also take control of giving you all of the furniture, but then charge you points on the backend, so you end up in a, like, a situation where you're way behind and you just can never get out of it.
Right, you can't catch up.
Management fee per percentage of the FTE is also an opportunity to try to take a look at, there's a wide variety here in Brevard of that, of that, like, a management fee might charge $400 per kid in one, and then $800 per kid in another, so, just from board to board, if you ever need any questions answered, feel free to reach out to me, I'm here for you, you know what I mean? But that, that, that finance breakdown is somewhere you guys may want to look when you're a board member, because that's where sometimes when your finances are constrained because of those things going on, it inhibits you from hiring at a salary, at a higher salary and everything else, and then all of a sudden, when you guys are trying to do, because STEM stuff's expensive, you know what I mean?
And money always matters.
Yeah, but I've found a lot of, and I've found a lot of our charters that are successful here in the county are usually like, basically have their local boards that are managing them and stuff like that, because then they help give that face that you may not have being from out of town, right? So, there's a lot of the locals that are a part of this, so I appreciate you looking into bringing on locals, if you guys ever have any questions, please feel free to reach out.
I'd like to do that if possible, and like, you know, it's also just good to know, you know, what works, you know what I mean? Because it really helps us too.
You'll find that we're not a, we're not one of the districts that's trying to like run down to the permit office to make sure you guys don't get your permits, right? Like, we work with you because if you're successful, we're all successful, the children that are inside your charter are going to come into our schools, we want to make sure that we're working together. I, we, I have a, you know, a feeling we'll have a great relationship and, you know what I mean, looking forward to it, so, Ms. Campbell though had something to say?
Yeah, I just had a couple of questions, and, and I'm, I am, at least currently, till tonight, the charter school liaison have been for the last four, five years, so I'm familiar with all our charter schools and the, and the community. I, I will just say, the information that you just found out today that there was a charter school there that actually was not a great goodbye, it was a difficult situation in our county in the north end, and so, when you talk, you said the word trust at some point in your presentation, you're going to have to work hard on that, because there was, there was a point in time where we got down to, we didn't have any DRF schools except for that school. There was a lot of mismanagement going on, a lot of legal things that we had to do, and I won't get into all that to, to end that relationship, and then, of course, those families, our, our district schools then absorbed all those families back into our schools, and so, the schools are going to be a little jumpy, the community be a little jumpy, I'm, it sounds like you, you're building relationships already, but I just, just so you're aware, I mean, there's, because, you know, you're coming in brand-new doing this, that school also came in brand-new doing that, and I'm not, I'm glad to hear actually that you don't have any relationship with them, because that would be a, I would be a hard thing for me to say yes. However, I, I did want to say, I was just checking with Mr. Gibbs, I think that because your board has to operate under sunshine laws, maybe not exactly at the same level that we do, but I think your meetings, like, I don't think you're going to be able to have your board meetings outside of the county.
Right, we know that, yeah.
Okay, okay, so you're, you'll be here when you're, okay, because that, that would make it a difficulty, so, good, you're on it, you're on it, so that was just, just, just so you know, it'd probably be good to, to get a little bit of that history from somewhere up in the, the north end.
Yeah.
You know, because some of those families moved from one place to then here, and then they had to go back, and, you know, some of those families are still around, that, because it was only three years ago, I think, that we did that, so, thank you.
And you can tell them that's not you, I'll tell you from your energy that you're not those people, they started the organization in the wrong way, you're not doing that, so when they come up to you, just say, yeah, that was just something else, like, don't get tied to it.
You still have to build, you know, and I get that, like, I get when people.
But don't, don't, don't focus on the negative, those, that, that organization and those lead, that leadership should have been put in caps and handcuffs and, and hauled off, but you guys, I don't care, but you guys are not that, so don't even hesitate, just reach out to us, we're here for you, you know what I mean? We'll work with you, we're good, all right?
Wonderful, thank you.
We can tell them.
Anybody else? Dr. Rindell?
Mr. Cherry, yeah, I was wondering if Dr. Meyer could come up and kind of give us a little timeline about like where we are in the process, what's happening next, that kind of thing, because.
You don't have to bring the book.
Just so we have a little bit of context of where we are, what the next steps are and that kind of thing.
So, I developed a team of all the heads of every department, and we are.
Not sure if that's on.
Okay, and the heads of the department, and we're now reviewing it, and we will get together at the end of November to discuss if anyone had any questions for, you know, the whole group or anything like that, and then we'll have a capacity interview where we ask all the questions that came up while reviewing and, for the portions, and they're aware of that, I've given them a timeline.
Some of the same questions you guys were coming up.
Yes, and, and, you know, we look through it all, and then we provide insight and we discuss with them, and then we put forth a, a recommendation.
Okay. Are we all good?
And they have signed saying that we can have above the 90 days, that's also in your binder, yeah.
So, do we have electronic copies of that application so the board members don't have to?
Yes.
I don't, I think we should go old-school and have to carry them around.
But I can provide hard copies too, if you all would like.
Yeah.
No.
You're cutting down half the forest.
Call the trees.
Any other questions for us?
No, we just appreciate your openness and your willingness to talk to us and, and even ask us questions, you're taking your time out of your day, I know, for, for this meeting to spend with us, so we appreciate that very much.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions? Look forward to seeing, did you say you're from Hawaii? Or spent some time in Hawaii, did you say that?
She has, I, I grew, I grew up there.
She grew up there, yeah.
It's my home.
That's what I was going to ask, maybe you'll put some rainbow eucalyptuses there That's what I was going to ask, um, maybe you'll put some rainbow eucalyptuses there on the campus. That's a, always a beautiful, I've planted them everywhere around here.
Really?
Yeah, they're, they're growing everywhere, so anyways.
I was telling you, I worked at a school one time called Honolay Elementary, and the whole administrative staff, this was in California, had to wear aloha shirts everywhere. Yeah, we can do that for.
We have aloha Fridays.
If you guys need any help, you reach out, we're here for you. Thank you so much, we're fully in process.
If there's anything we can do better, um, or, um, that we can improve on, please let us know, um, before, you know.
It's all collaborative, you know what I mean, we're here to help.
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, everybody.
Have a great day.
All right, you guys good to start rolling into the nine thousands? All righty, you need a second?
Mr. Susan, I had one more issue on the Neola process. I forgot to bring up, staff had asked to consolidate the revisions into like a couple of dates a year. So on your package, on the agenda, there's like a little sample down at the bottom where the spreadsheet is that gives you dates, like, uh, one of, the first proposal would be for a final approval hearing of all policies revised that you guys have already done on, for final approval on two twenty seven. That would be rule development potentially on two six for the first public hearing, and then the workshop on January twenty third. But that is, does the board have the appetite for potentially three hundred policies going at one time or more? So. This was coming from staff. The request was to have them all brought twice a year or so.
Correct, the staff actually requested this. Rather than a little bit here, a little bit here, a little bit here, to say, all right.
That means we were not, we're not, that means we're not going to do any more between now and then, we're going to do.
Right, we're going to wait and we're going to have, staff will know, this is your next opportunity to have your policies done, so they need to work on them. And that, once the big process is over, it will work out, because Neola usually issues two updates a year.
Right.
And you can schedule.
Again, once we plow through this mass that we have now, it'll be just a regular, every, twice a year, we do this.
So it's just, what's the board's appetite? And do you want it on an agenda, or do you want a special set, like, these are policy-only meetings?
Workshops.
Specials, I would, my vote would be special, nothing else on the agenda besides policy.
I would say, I would say special, and then I would say, can we start at nine?
Yes.
Well, some of them, some of these we're starting, are, are, if our calendar gets approved, we have.
Yeah, but those are meetings.
The February meeting, I, yeah.
I just want to start at nine o'clock, here's one time.
The rulemaking process is you, the second public hearing has to be an evening workshop.
Okay, but the other one, we can start at nine.
Yeah, so you can special set a board meeting for policy approval only to start at the five thirty on an off Tuesday, if you want.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and then the other one, we start at nine and we just bring food in.
You could do a regular daytime workshop.
It doesn't have to be a Tuesday either, does it? I mean, it can be any day.
No, it can be any day, but we're going to need those dates. We'll work with Lena to get dates so that we can advertise them.
Right, so if you guys approved the calendar tonight, then we'll work against those dates.
Some special meetings.
Right.
So I, my only issue is if, so we only have one right now, work, the workshop times, one workshop in January, that's the twenty third date, um, we've got two in February, the sixth. So if that's, that means we wouldn't be able, if y'all have something you need to present to us, we wouldn't, we wouldn't have an opening until February twenty seventh, so.
Well, it would be special, so we wouldn't be bringing them on any schedule.
Probably pick one of those off days.
Right.
Okay. Y'all work it out.
I like it, I like it, I like it. Did you want to talk to?
That was kind of one of the biggest things for, that Paul was supposed to bring up with you guys, because staff was waiting for that.
And he forgot.
He didn't forget it, he got it.
He got it.
I gotta give him a hard time, he gave me a hard time during the expulsion hearing. Okay, you had mentioned that you may want to speak to the calendar item?
Yeah, just in case anybody who's watching was looking closely at the agenda, and we pulled it off the agenda, published today, but it was on the agenda before, was the twenty-four, twenty-five school calendar. We were going to talk about that today. And I have to apologize to the board, we kind of missed some steps in the past. Uh, Mr. Alba would sit down with each board member and kind of go over the recommended calendar that was coming out of the committee and share the feedback from the survey with the community. And I've shared a little bit of that information with each of you individually, but it's not been the kind of in-depth presentation that Mr. Alba used to do. So Mr. Dufresne is going to do that with each of you in the next couple of weeks. And we'll have the, you know, calendar proposal on the agenda for the December twelfth workshop, work session. And we'll also publish the results of the survey, because I promised the public that we would do that. But we want to share that with you and have, that you digest it, and then we'll publish it when we publish the materials for that, uh, December twelfth work session. So it's just, you know, I told Mr. Susan, you know, we pulled it off the agenda, but anybody that was like closely looking at the agenda and hoping, you know, to hear news about the calendar, not going to be today. We'll do it in December. Want to make sure the board gets all the information so that when you got, when we have a discussion at the work session, you have the information already, it's not like new to you that day.
Okay, everybody good on that? Any questions? All right, thank you.
I have a comment that I would like to make on it, which I think I've, I've given Dr. Randella a heads up on this, and I, board, I'm going to challenge you on this, um, because I have been having conversations with my principals and getting feedback, and I would like for you guys to do the same. Um, and then obviously, this is a big conversation that we continue on. But the thought of year-round school, the state is piloting this right now. They're, they've got money out there for us to do this on, you know, an elementary basis. But just looking at what does that look like for our district if the entire district was to go year-round school? I would love for you to get feedback and see what your leaders are saying at their school sites. Talk to parents, and then this is a conversation we'll continue to have when we talk about the calendar again in December. That's all.
Everybody okay with that? Year-round school?
Wait, wait, we don't want the headline to say we're going to do year-round school.
Well, that's what it'll say anyways, but I'm just saying this is a conversation that's starting.
Conversation wrapped around, looking at it as an opportunity is always good for our school district. I think that's something we should do. Yeah, I'll, I'll be ready with my notes from my administrators.
Okay.
And parents, okay? Everybody else okay? All right, so we're going to go on to the nine thousands. We've been trying to do these things for a couple of terms. And what I did was I just went to like the first one, which was ninety-seven hundred, is everybody okay?
Why did you do that out of order?
I have no idea, but that's, if you guys are okay with just going by that big old thing, then it's ninety-five pages long, we can just kind of roll through it. So the first one up is ninety-seven hundred, relations with the special interest groups. Goes through and it has two options inside of there, and it goes, and it, yeah, if you guys want to take a second and go through it. Dr. Randell, I'm probably going to ask you, like, what are your thoughts on some of these?
And I'm going to probably ask Mr. Brune to tell us his thoughts on these things.
The reason is, is that there's a couple that have multiple options, there's a couple that have, you know what I mean, those, um, Neolas and everything else. So is everybody loaded up?
Yeah, I'm ready to go.
I'll take my time, you, you take, you might want to, this is big time right now.
So are you asking for our input on this yet?
Ms. Jenkins, are you good? All right, um, all right, so we're all good to go, ninety-seven hundred, relations with special interest groups. Um, if you look at it, it gives a couple of options. Mr. Brune, you want to take, give us your suggestions here?
My suggestion is we don't have any changes to our current policy based on Neola.
I, on ninety-seven hundred? I have that there's a lot of, there was several things updated. I don't have them side by side like I usually do.
Okay.
Because seems like Neola had quite, Neola had updated, ours was in twenty-ten, theirs was, their most recent was in twenty-sixteen. And, pardon me, because it's been a few weeks since I wrote my notes, I'm trying to remember what I, what I meant.
I had to literally go back to my notes and rewrite them.
Yeah, option, I had written option two and then examples with a question mark. Um, and also, we don't have an administrative procedure, and we didn't administer a procedure on this one, but, um, so we, I don't know that ours has that clearly delineated about the materials. Where did it go? So you're just suggesting that we don't add any of the things that Neola has in there that we don't have?
From my reading, and I, I'm welcome to go back and, and look at it again, but what we have is sufficient, and Neola's update doesn't change in direction what our current policy is.
Okay. Except for if ours, I think ours said something about an administrative procedure.
Yeah, the, the A P can be added, obviously, if it calls for it, um, which.
And I don't remember, because it's been so long since I did my notes, I don't remember if it was because our policy had said administrative procedure or if the Neola one said needs to have one, but, oh, I'm looking really quick. And I should have, I totally should have gone back through my notes.
Listen, you do you. Just give us a second here, Mr.
Yeah, I'm not seeing it either. I think the, I think that was in the Neola, yeah, I think it was in Neola, so I'm fine with that.
All right, I'm going to get down here to ninety-seven hundred, working with special interest groups. All right, okay. So, well, I'm hearing a couple of things. Ms. Campbell, you're saying that Neola had some updates, are those based upon, um, updates into state statutes? Or are the updates, because I'm, I'm trying to read both too.
There's only one statute.
There's one statute referenced at the bottom of the, the template. I mean, sale of school supplies, all of these other things.
That statute just has to do with use of buildings and grounds, that we can allow people to use our, um, facilities for, um, whatever purposes. You know, like elections, some school districts, their schools are elect, are polling places.
Yeah, it's part of our current policy, of course.
Right, which we don't have those.
You know, it says that it must be carefully reviewed, it doesn't say who is reviewing it, whom is reviewing it. So I think just specifying on there, is this the principal that's reviewing this info? Who's reviewing the materials?
Gets approval by the superintendent.
Are you, which paragraph are you talking about?
I'm on the first paragraph, so.
Of our policy?
Yeah. Materials must be carefully reviewed to ensure, it doesn't say who's reviewing it, so.
I think everybody.
Well, I think that, I don't want to leave it to assumption. I think it's probably a good idea to, to make sure there's some responsibility there to, so that we can, if something gets distributed or handed out that's not appropriate, then we need to be able to know, hey.
If, if the board wishes, I can work with Dr. Randell and, and come up with an idea. You'll notice Neola's update doesn't address that question either.
Yeah, it's the same language.
I know.
Probably the superintendent or designee is probably what we're going to put in there.
Yeah, just easy, same as the other policies.
Because almost always.
Yeah.
All right, everybody good on that?
Yeah.
Everybody good on the, um, ninety-seven hundred? Okay, moving on, telephone communications. I had on my notes.
Oh, we don't have this.
I'm like, what, what a policy are you on? Our next policy is ninety-one twenty, right?
Right, right, so telephone communications, board is interested in maintaining effective communication with parents, members. It's just basically a, uh, it's not any requirements, it's not, we don't need to have it, right?
Yeah, it's saying that a live person's going to answer the phone, that's just not feasible.
I, listen, as much as we strive to do that, I agree with you.
Right.
I, I just wanted to make sure that you guys were okay with that. Everybody good?
So we're not going to adopt that, correct?
Unless you want to answer the phone every time, no?
Well, our current phone system is designed to try to find a human. And doesn't always succeed, but our goal is to do that and, and give, good, good customer service. So I don't think it's, this, uh, ninety-one eleven, I don't think would be impactful.
Okay.
It would be impactful, just not in a positive way.
We could have fun forwarding that phone to certain individuals that are a part of the district.
Directions about what we should default to zero and all that, you know, we are.
Right, right, yeah, I know.
Okay, um, next one up, ninety-one twenty, public information program. Last modified by Tammy on September twentieth, twenty-twenty-three.
That's just the date they download them.
Um, what are you guys' thoughts?
It's fine, it's pretty much the same.
Is there any changes that you guys want to make to it? I, this is just fluff to me, I didn't, didn't really bother me on that one.
No, I'm good.
Okay, everybody else okay with that? All right, um, moving on to ninety-one thirty, com, public complaints, it's a Neola one. I have on my notes to ask Dr. Randell what his thoughts are on this, um, if you guys can take a look at it. Brune, do you have anything here for ninety-one thirty?
Well, um, G C R loves to have this, but this policy, as you'll read, is, is really focused on if somebody has an issue with an employee and how that, how that is elevated.
Right.
And then there's also the second part, if somebody has an issue with the superintendent, how that's dealt with and elevated. I don't necessarily, um, have any input on, on that, um, won't be happy to own it. But, um, it was adopted by, according to our records, adopted by you guys in March of twenty-twenty-three. And it did not go through G C R, what, twenty-twenty-two?
Uh, I think it's twenty-three.
Okay.
Yeah, it's twenty-three, but, um, we, there's a couple of things that, that, because July had, um, a couple of updates. There are ver, there's one very small one, because you know how the libraries, now it says school and classroom? That was one of the Green New Year updates, and we need to do that change, and I can't remember, it's down.
It's on page ten.
Okay, yeah, so wherever that says that we, I need to add a classroom, but I had, I had two other little things. One is, there's the levels, like first level, second level, third level. I believe that we need to add, I wanted to see if the board thought this. You know, usually it's confusing, there were, it says note, it's, I'm on page eight, board. Um, note, and it's in bold, it says this level does not apply if the matter involves suspected child abuse, substance abuse, or the well, da-da-da-da-da. I, that may be a drafting note from Neola, but I think that is very important. I think if we're going to have these level of complaints, that that needs to be clear to the public who may use this policy to file a complaint, that this, there's, this level doesn't exist if it involves these things. So I believe that note actually needs to be published in the policy.
All right, sorry, you're talking about the, where are you at on this?
It's on page, what did I say?
Eight is what you said?
Eight, yeah, it's right there in bold, it says bold, it just basically says, you know, if it's a matter of those things, child abuse, substance abuse, we're not going to, where you need to reach out to the teacher and talk to them about whatever, that, it, it's elevated, right? I don't think, to me, that's not just a drafting note from Neola, that's like a.
Yeah, it needs to be written.
A note that needs to be included in the policy, that we take those things seriously.
So that should be in green, in other words, it should be added, is what you're saying.
Yeah, no, I believe, I believe so. Um, so that was my first thing, and then in our little levers, letter C, one. I think we have some, this is just a formatting issue, I think we have some numbering issues going on there. Can we fix the numbers and letters in C one? Did you see that?
Yeah.
Yeah, it just, at some point needed to go back to numbers and off the letters, so if y'all can take a look at that. But, um, that, those three things that add the word classroom, because of the new legislation, add that note, and then fix the numbering and lettering in, in C.
And?
That's, those are suggestions that I had.
Ninety-one thirty. Sorry, I'm pinging between two things. Okay. Yeah, we're good.
Uh, anybody else have anything?
Anybody else have anything on this one?
You guys addressed the fact that there's two different statutes?
On ninety-one thirty?
Well, there's two statutes on our policy.
So on the, on the, uh.
And this one, so.
So.
One nineteen.
Where was I?
Yeah, those two.
Those are the same ones, okay.
The same statutes are there, yeah.
All right, we're good, everybody good on that one? Okay.
Are, are they okay with my suggestions?
Yeah, no, I, your suggestions are good.
I'm sure they're great.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Susan.
Next up, ninety-one forty, citizens advisory committees. Um, I had a couple of notes on this, anybody else?
Um, there is a question of, one of them says the superintendent will dissolve, and the other one says the board will dissolve, and we need to make a decision.
I think, to be honest with you, when I read that, I was sitting there, and I was like, some are created by the board, some are created by the superintendent. So there are some citizen advisory committees that we may have, that the school board may want, I wish to ask for, and then, you know what I mean, like that. I'm not sure, because we're supposed to give the superintendent direction, if that's the proper process on all of these, because they're like citizens, which is kind of our area, you know what I mean? So I, I have no problem having both, you know what I mean? Depending on who it is that starts it, would be the person that would, you know what I mean?
I guess it would depend on what this, I mean, the one that I think of immediately is S I A C. But like the book.
Right.
Committee technically could be kind of an advisory committee. Um, I don't think that the superintendent, because we have it in policy, should not have the authority to dissolve the book challenge committee.
I think it just determines on who it is that sets it up, you know? I mean, Mr. Raymer might say he wants to just start a committee and he can dissolve it.
Right.
I think I'd be, I'd feel more comfortable if the language was with the board.
Yeah.
He's looking at it.
A district committee like this would be probably generated by the board.
Right.
So should.
And then Neola.
Says the board shall have the sole power to dissolve any of its advisory committees. So.
Yeah.
If anywhere it says superintendent, we should just change it to the board.
Okay.
So, anybody else have anything?
No.
Um, one of the things that I was looking at is, is that, uh, we have a lot of like advisory committees and boards and stuff like that, but there's no like master list somewhere that we can go to. Because I know you have some advisory lists and boards, and there's, you know what I mean? Like, there's no, so you have the book committee, and you have S I A C, and you have those, which is great. You have the audit committee, you have those. But then you also have, like, superintendent has his student council advisory committee and all of those. There's, there's no one real place that all of that's at, to look at. And it would be nice to have something like committees and stuff like that, so that people are aware of them and if they wanted to attend and look at it. But I, I, that was the first thing, is if there's a way that we can get a list, you may not want to put the names of the individuals on there, just the committee itself.
Actually, Mr. Susan, in our B F T contract that we're approving tonight, the new language that we all, they all agreed to, says the district will provide a list of all committees, this won't apply to the students, and members, and publish it on the district website, the labor relations page, the list will be updated when a new committee is formed or a current committee is disbanded.
Right, and that's great, but there's also some other ones that are there that, you know what I mean, like the students and all of those other ones that we need to add to it. So if there's a way that we can get that done, that would be great. The other thing I was going to say is this is a perfect opportunity for us to talk about the protection of our, um, our actual advisors that are sitting on our committees. Um, it's been a long argument that our committees are, our members are sitting on the committee, and then they're being attacked in the public. And I, I truly believe that there's an opportunity here for us to kind of say, we would like to, because they are acting inside of the scope of the school district, that if there is something that is done to them in their capacity as a committee member, that we should be able to defend them. I don't know what your thoughts are, Paul, I'd love to have your engagement on that. But this was a big star for me last time when I was looking through this, is to find that out. Because there's people that will no longer be a part of our committees, and this goes back eight years, that, because they get attacked for being on the committee, and then in some cases, people are crazy about it and ruins their lives. And so now, is there a way that we can protect them? And so now, is there a way that we can protect them, a way that we can say this is wrong and files, I don't know. I'd like to hear you guys' thoughts, and then we can turn the phone. What do you guys think?
I think, um, this is a touchy one, I, at this day and age, anybody that goes on a committee knows they're subject to all the fun things that come with public education, it's highly controversial, people are attacking. And so I think the power that the board has is they can disband a com- a committee, and say, okay, if the public's going to attack individuals, then we'll take back the power, we'll no longer do a committee, uh, and that's how we stop it. I, I don't love that, I would love for the public to, to be respectful and, and make sure that they're honoring the people that are serving their time, they're dedicating their time to, to make our school system better. But I don't know, I don't, what, I'm not really clear on what your thoughts are on how Paul, what you're asking Paul exactly, are you asking him to pursue like legal action against individuals that are attacking people, or what?
So it, sometimes it's not even individuals, there has been in recent, um, news, and then, and even in some of the stuff that goes on around here, there's organizations and companies that are paid to create social media, um, fake social medias and go after people.
Yeah.
And there's actually people that will call, do phone calls, do everything, like this is part of a game that individuals are paid for, and when they're targeting our people, it pisses me off.
Oh, that makes sense, too.
And I'll be honest with you, uh, this isn't something that's fake, like, there are organizations out there that get paid to create chaos inside of school districts, that's a fact. And they create fake social media accounts, they do all that stuff, and then they go attack people at their schools, they attack them at their workplace, they attack them in different places, and it's BS. And it's sometimes phone calls from outside the state and everything else, I think we should protect people, I, I just, I, that's just my thing, I mean
So I just, I'm not sure that that falls under the scope of this policy, just for our conversation, to keep it moving along, cause I, I mean, I think we have
I wanna have the conversation.
I, well, I understand you, but you know, it, there's nothing that would, I don't think that would prohibit someone who, if they were being defamed or whatever, from filing their own lawsuit, correct, Paul?
Right, yeah, I don't know that we would have standing on behalf of the school board if they're attacking individuals.
Right.
So I mean, there, th- those are gonna be case-by-case analyses, that it's gonna be hard to address in a broad scope, so if somebody's getting attacked, we would have to evaluate on each one, and then it would be, again, I don't know what's being asked. So it's like, what does defend mean, so if you're saying, hey, go file a lawsuit to
Yeah.
Get an injunction against somebody, that would be the board directive.
I also, I don't like the idea of making policy based on specific worst-case scenarios, and we have to take those into consideration, but I mean, I also think about like our discipline committee that has been revived, and that, it's from all things that I have heard, it's going really well, and, um, you know, and I haven't heard about that kind of thing, I mean, obviously the book challenge, but we, we worked on that, board, we've, we've refined that process to try to remove the potential for abuse as much as we can, I don't know that we can ever truly eliminate it.
Yeah.
Um, just because, like, you know what Ms. Wright said, just the nature of the beast.
Okay, so anyways, so if we have somebody who is on one of our committees, they are being attacked by somebody that is either in or outside of the committee, um, I think there's a way to address that. And Paul, I'd like to hear how our board would be able to address that. If we decided that we were, this is not, this is enough, we need to have better behavior, how would we address that? Is there a way for you to send a cease and desist to the individual that's doing it as they're attacking, is that outside of our scope, I'd like to talk about it.
I mean, it's gonna depend on the specifics of the case, if they're just publicly saying that this committee's wrong and evil, and expressing their opinions, that's protected information, I don't know that you're gonna be able to do anything on that.
That's, that's not the question.
If they're calling people names on social media, again, there's court cases that say First Amendment.
Yep.
So it's gonna be, I would need specifics to give you a specific answer to each situation, I would have to analyze each specific situation.
So say, say there's a person that's sitting on our committee, they're being attacked at their place of business where they work, because they were on that committee, by individuals calling, showing up and doing stuff. Do we have the right to send a cease and desist in that case? Not, not social media, because we get it, right, like that would be chasing after tails, but there's a coordinated effort to do those kind of things, can you send a cease and desist? Especially if it's a coordinated effort by a company.
Right, you could send a ceas- you could send a letter anytime, just sending a letter, I don't know that there would be any real legal teeth to it. If they're on another person's business, it seems like that would be more of a trespassing, that that business could file. I don't know that I would have standing to file on behalf of that business, I don't represent that business.
So if there's a coordinated effort by a business to attack an individual at their place of business, there's no way to somehow put teeth in something and go after that business?
If they're trespassing on a, we don't have standing to file on behalf of another entity.
I, I'm having a real hard time
I'm putting a scenario together.
I'm trying to stay with you, but I mean, you, it sounds like you have a very specific situation, and I, and a situation that I'm not aware of.
No, 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 I'm trying to, I'm trying to, no, what I'm doing is I'm trying to
So I don't wanna, I don't wanna work off of hypotheticals.
It's hypothetical would be what we were seeing on some of our committees, but I'm trying to get to a place that, is there anything that would allow us to do it? That's what I'm doing, I'm putting together hypotheticals that would say, in the event that this happened, this extreme issue, is there an opportunity for us to do it?
If there's, if it's an attack on our property, they can always be trespassed from our property, and so, I mean, again, it, it's all, what are the facts of the situation?
Right.
If they're removed from the district and the district's processes, we get more limited in what we can do. It becomes, you know, personal, or if they're attacking, if they're showing up at someone's business, that's not our, we don't control that.
Sure.
It may be because they're participating in a district process, but that's something the business, now, it's something we could look at if it comes up, certainly, and evaluate at that time, based on the facts. Maybe work with the business if they want some assistance, if the board wants to fund, you know, hey, we will fund an attorney to file on behalf of this member and that business.
I think, um, Mr. Susan, just like what I was saying, I, the only power that we really retain here, because as much as, you know, freedom of speech is a really fun thing to say we all love until you're being attacked, and then all of a sudden, it, it becomes a little more challenging to really defend it. And the only power that we retain is to dissolve a committee, and that eliminates the individuals from having that threat, because it puts it back to us. And I mean, we all signed up for this, we knew what we signed up for, our committee members
We're different.
Are, are different, and I don't like it, I don't love it, trust me, and, and I wish the public was, didn't act in this way, but that is the reality of where we're at, so I don't
Okay, all right, well, it sounds like there's no teeth in anything that I can throw out there, so we'll take it.
Sorry, I wish I could
No, 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 I just, I just, I, I would, I wanted to have that conversation, and I appreciate it, Paul, for having that, it's just that we have people that are, you know, I mean, like, look, I, I've had my car keyed up twice since we've been here. I've had people that call my off to place of business, people laugh at them, but the thing is, is that, like, um, it's a coordinated effort, and we do it, and I'm okay, like, I get it, it's part of being here, but the people who come in to support us need to have some support and protection, so maybe that's just us calling people out, I don't know, but, thank you for going through that, Paul.
No, if they're keying cars and things, that's vandalism, that's a report to the cops, and you file a report, and you have those avenues, so like, if they're threatening lives or harm to somebody, again, that's a police report that you file and go that way. If they're just, usually our stuff is verbal attacks and not necessarily threatening, it's just them
It's what it is, man, I appreciate you going through that with us, I, I just wanted to get down to the bottom of it, okay. All right, so what I'm seeing is, is that, is there any, um, changes that you guys want to do on the citizens advisory committee? Did you wanna, uh, it sounds like Dr. Rindell wants to have the board actually do the
Yeah, we'll just change that language.
Superintendent to the board, yeah.
Yep, okay.
I agree.
All right, we're good on that, moving on, nine-one-four-one, business advisory council, um, I'll leave it up to the board, I have a bunch of comments on this one.
Uh, yeah, I don't, I don't like, I don't see the need to add this policy, because we have in multiple ways, great partnerships with our businesses, we've got our PIs, we've got all the things that the superintendent does, um, to add an extra committee. I, I mean, it's great purposes, but I think these are things that we're already doing, um, organically. And, and, and not just in an organi- in disorganized way, we are doing it in organized ways, but without the policy.
Okay, um, anybody else wish to speak to this? So one of the things that I've noticed, since I've been very connected into the trades, and if you walk in and talk to the people, our teachers have a very difficult time creating advisory boards, right? It's just part of it, and our district is trying to run around and, and help out, but I believe that we should have some more of these business advisory councils, I think that it would help us. I think that if you were to put together north, central, and south, um, business advisory council on specific areas of interest, you may be able to do a better job of piping through, like, um, the Economic Development Council Board of Directors, we presented to them on a basis at the beginning of the year, that was great. We talked about creating all these different opportunities and stuff like that, that opportunity doesn't happen on a regular basis, we could formalize something like that. If you had, um, a couple of other things, like, we could create these entities so that they would be streamlined and give us direction. Right now, um, the Industry Council from, uh, Palm Bay's con- construction program is a little bit different than the Industry Council from Space Coast, and they, they run for their construction programs, and they, they could use some help. So if you guys don't have any interest in doing it, that's one thing, I think that this is a good opportunity, but like Ms. Campbell said, there's, you know, you may not want to create something, um, because there are extra committees and stuff like that, to me. I do know that we have, we need, we need to be able to help our schools with their industry councils, there needs to be some more support in our career and technical programs, there's also needs to be some support inside of our, giving jobs to our students with disabilities after they graduate from us, like, there's, there's a need for connectivity to the business, and sometimes these are the things that do it. That is where I was coming from, Dr. Rindell, what are your thoughts on that?
Yeah, I, I don't know that we need a policy for a business advisory council.
To create it, right.
I think it's more like, we just need to go out and do those things.
Okay.
Just need to go out and form those partnerships and do those things, and we've done it in the past, in some ways, and some of those have dissolved, we just need to pick up those and, and create those relationships again, I, I don't know if we need a policy.
Okay.
We just need to do those things.
I think it's also a good opportunity to, to reach out to your chamber, Titusville's Chamber does a phenomenal job at connecting businesses to our schools. So, um, you know, if you're going to those, I don't know, ours does a monthly chamber meeting, and we sit down and talk, and, and target specific businesses, and that helps tie them back. So if there's a way to, to get involved there, that'll be helpful with that forming another committee, you know?
Yep.
Yep, all right, everybody good?
Yeah.
Okay, next up is ninety-one fifty, uh, school visitors, um, anybody wish to have anything to say about this one?
Yeah.
Go.
I do, um, I think that this policy needs to be revised to specifically rewarding the board members' visitation. You know, if we cite the statute, Florida statute one zero zero one point four two, and list in there what our role is as a school board member, it says, visit the schools, observe the management and instruction, give suggestions for improvement, and advise citizens. Sorry, I'm trying to read my own handwriting two weeks ago, and it's pretty bad, all right, uh
Yeah, there's been a lot of updates on this one since two thousand
If you look at the Neola template, there's a whole section on visitation by board members and legislators, I was looking at that, um, there's that piece.
Yeah, there's also, so there's a part, I have it in my notes, principal controls, the time of day length, and I come, I think that was just a note that, from the Neola, um, I, there's also in Neola, there's this part about animals in campus. I just said, I'd written, do we need this note, and, but we need a reference to a different policy, cause ours is eighty-three ninety, not eighty-four hundred. Because now, nowadays, you can't go anywhere without somebody bringing their dog, right? The grocery store, Disney World, the airport, emotional support animals, or whatever, so I think we need to probably edit, be clear.
Your dog's not allowed in.
Right, you can't bring
I agree, I agree.
You can't, even if it's an emotional support animal, if it's except for, I think this one says, except for canines brought by law enforcement personnel, um, or, you know, service animals, obviously, if we have a blind student who has a, you know, that's already gone through that process, it follows our policy. But other animals may not be on campus, I think we need to add that note, too.
Well, and, um, what about when it comes to like, we have some individuals that come bring wildlife into the classroom to use it as a, as a learning experience, would that
That, I think that's covered in eighty-three ninety, so like, if you have chickens in a science lab, or stuff like that.
Reptiles from the zoo.
Okay, so that wouldn't
I, I have to, I, I can't remember eighty-three ninety off the top of my head, but I think that kind of animal is covered by
Okay, I just wanted to
Classroom, this is talking about visitors, so like, if you're a visitor, right, right, you're not, you can't bring your emotional support cat to our campus.
No, but if we have somebody come in that, I mean, we have, we have an individual in the north end, and, uh, he brings in gators and snakes, and he didn't bring them to our schools, I, I will say he's brought them to our church to show kids.
Right.
But he's a visitor.
Improved classroom, I think that's in eighty-three ninety, though.
Okay, I'll go back and look at it, just to make sure.
It is in there, and there's also language in there about protecting anybody who may have allergic reaction to animals being brought in, uh, for educational purposes, so it gets pretty thorough, it is eighty-three ninety.
Yeah.
Okay.
But I do think we need to add that note, just so we're clear, cause especially in today's world, where everybody likes to bring their animals everywhere.
Okay.
So my only recommendation, again, to follow up, is to add Florida statute one zero zero one point four two, and cite in there the visitation, observe the management, instruction, give suggestions for improvement, um, that specific part of that statute.
Yeah, we also don't have the information about custody, I don't think there's a statement updated underneath that, in the Neola, underneath the addition that you can add about animals, there was, there was something about custody, I think, that we need to make sure we have that in there, too. So basically, we need to, you know, I think we need to do some Neola updates.
I'll work with operations on updating this, cause it is pretty, a lot of differences
Yeah.
Um, with Neola, so I think it's, 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 uh, it'll be a full review.
Yeah.
Says it right there, animals in the classroom is regulated by policy eighty-four hundred, canines, people on campus.
Yeah, except it needs to be eighty-three ninety for us.
Yeah, um, okay, anybody else? So where I have is, I wanted to just reiterate, uh, you know, that board members are allowed to go to their schools.
Right.
Have to, but we do want to give the principals the opportunity, but in the event that you want to go to a school, you can go to school, check in, and, you know what I mean, observe and stuff like that. The policy states, as far as the Neola piece that I would like to add, um, gives some really good visitation by board members and legislators, it says if you see something, um, carry it to the superintendent, don't like engage with the staff and say, you're doing this, you're doing that, you know what I mean?
Right, right, it's not an inspection, right.
Yeah, and I think that, um, all right, did you guys, I feel that the Neola update is a good policy, and that I would like to put in the visitation by board members and legislators, cause there's been some, there's been some instances where, um, you know what I mean, throughout the years, that some of the principals may not know that, so
Yeah. And I think we, we updated our bylaw one seventy-two to include that language.
Yeah, I think maybe.
So it would match what we did, when we did one seventy-two.
Okay, so, um, I would say the new Neola policy that sits inside of there, the components, if you want to bring something back that kind of reflects what we said, uh, as far as that board member section along legislators, along what she was talking about, that's okay?
We'll do it.
All right, the other thing that I would like to bring up on this policy is, is that, um, we have a bunch of schools who, uh, they only, they have different rules throughout the county on when a parent may visit during lunch. And I have some schools that have given a lottery, so once you get lunch, you can't come back, um, there's other schools that say you can only come on a certain day, there's other schools that, and, and I understand that that's security, there's some issues there with security, but, um, I think that there's a way for us to look at that and allow our te- our parents to have a little bit more access than once a day, or once a month, or once a semester. Does anybody feel like this is kind of an inhibitive statute?
So it's funny that you bring this up, because I, again, I've been at so many elementary schools in the last two weeks, and I, I always ask that question, like, is that, is this something that you're seeing, and every school does it a little different, you're right, so some schools only do it one day a week, it rotates the day, you know, they sign, they do a sign-up genius, um, and every single one of them says the same thing. The biggest issue is we don't have the volunteers to supervise the parents coming in, and so I'm like, hey, this is a great opportunity for you to recruit some volunteers, cause if you have a parent coming to eat lunch, like, that's a volunteer, send them down to the district, let's get them fingerprinted and, and sign them up to be a volunteer. They all say the same thing, I said, hey, do you have parents that are, that are mad about this, do you, are you running into that, they're not running into it, and I don't know if that's just because parents are used to it. I mean, I'm obviously pro-parent, I'm wanting to be able to eat with your children, it's very important, and then especially like the first day of school, taking your kid to school to take that picture with the teacher, those are times that are really important. So I guess to refine it into a policy, I'm afraid if you were to say, open it up to all the time, it's gonna open up Pandora's box at the school site. Have you asked any of the principals, like, what that means?
So I have some that are extremely mad, like, I've got some parent groups that are extremely mad in some of my schools, and especially in the Viera area, that they're not able to. Like, wha- what happens is, is in one of my schools, you're allowed to sign up at the beginning of the year, so like, the five parents sign up, all of it block out.
Okay.
Right, so there's another one, like, it's just
So they did tweak that a little bit.
Yeah.
I, I think there's that, but then there's definitely enough volunteers in those schools, that if you told them you could expand the amount of days that you're allowed to go to eat with your kid
Yeah.
That they would be there, but they're being inhibited, and so there's, there, there are some, some pieces inside of there, um, that I think we could work on, that's all, because I, I, I do know, even at the beginning of the year, parents aren't allowed on, on their campuses to walk their kid to school.
Yeah.
That's, that, like, let's talk about that, like
Unfortunately, that's the world that we live in, cause I, I just thought about when, when my kid first started in two thousand nine, to, where everybody walked on campus, and everybody walked right up to the door to pick up your kid at the end of the day, we are not in that world.
Yeah.
And, but I, I hear what you're saying, and I, we did, as a board, maybe two years ago, give direction for the principals to find a way to start opening lunches back up, right? The, the tricky part is, every campus is so different, because sometimes the arrangement of the building itself creates, makes it easier or hard, or harder to, uh, supervise this. And then every school's at a different level of staffing, some of them are really struggling, so that's why I hate, I would hate the idea of us as a board, kind of issuing the edict from on high, you shall do this, and, and it's so hard. So I, I'd rather leave this at the principal level decision, because they know their building, they know their staffing level, and how stretched they are, um, and, and if we have some schools that are creating a, a, an equitable way of doing it, then maybe, you know, we work with those directors and say, hey, help this school find a way to make it a little more, you know, so that more families have opportunities to do that. But I, I don't want us to, um, with still with the staffing levels that we have, um, to, to make that edict from on high right now.
So I think, I think we had said that if there were volunteers available, that there would be an opportunity to expand the opportunity for families to be a part of it, right? So staff is one thing, but if you have volunteers that can come in
Volunteers, yeah.
I think there's a way. I think there's a way. So Dr. Rendell, if I could work with you on some, some sort of a plan to allow more participation. One of the problems I'm having is, is that I see a lot of disconnect between our parents and some of the schools that used to not be there. And, um, I'd like to try to find an opportunity to.
Yeah, I think we'd like to explore that a little bit. Maybe there is a legitimate reason why campus is not allowing it as much as another campus.
Why I'm not saying any.
Could be supervision, lack of support, that kind of thing. But if we can't really find a concrete reason as to why one school might be limiting that amount, we might have to say, hey, look, you gotta rethink this and.
Sure.
You know, the parents are part of the deal here, it's part of the community, it's part of the partnership, you know, and if they want to come eat lunch with their kids, they should be able to do that.
And then there's the other side, that there are some over abundant parents that, you know, sit in the car loop an hour before.
Oh, those are the perfect ones. Go give them an application.
Get them and get them in there, let's volunteer in the schools.
You ever hear an hour early?
Walk down the car line and hand out the volunteer application.
Yeah, I mean, that's honestly a good.
And a, uh, job application, too.
And it's, yeah, right. One of the other things I think would be really, really good, and this is probably more, more so for our elementary, but on the first day of school to, if there was a way, and I don't, I don't know how that works logistically, but to have the teachers out front somewhere where a parent can get that first day picture. It really matters to parents, I mean, it really does. I, I know I've had it for several years with my kids and then I lost it after COVID.
Who would be in the classroom with the other kid?
I know, I know.
I'll talk to my elementary friends, I don't know enough about.
Yeah. How that works and the management of it, I know, I know. Or maybe that's the day we get volunteers. That would be really great to have, like, your, your PTO really in there knocking out of the park and and taking those pictures and sending them to parents. Because it really, it's a great thing to have and then be able to take that picture at the end of the year as well, you know, to see them change, so.
I think there's some good work we can do in this area. So I look forward to working with you, Dr. Rendell. All right, everybody's okay with that one? I think the next one up is ninety-one sixty point zero one. Can I take a second and ask you guys, is there a time that you guys want to stop? Because obviously we probably will not get through all of these. We have another hour.
We stay focused, we probably could.
We could.
Got sidetracked a few times.
All right.
Let's keep going.
But I think, um, I think that if you guys, okay, well, I just want to, I want to, listen, I will work right up to five-thirty, go back up there and go.
No, no, we're not doing that.
All right, I'm just saying.
Let's reevaluate at four o'clock. Okay, there we go.
All right, here we go. Um, ninety-six point zero one, nine, ninety-one sixty point zero one complaint.
Oh, wait, did we do ninety-one sixty?
Yeah, we have, um, we have ninety-one sixty that.
Oh, they're out of order.
Is our policy, but it's not a Neola policy.
Right.
Right, and this is really talking about the.
Sorry, ninety-one sixty, I apologize.
Oh, no, no, you're right. You're going in order by the sheets.
They were.
Yeah, yeah, you're right, I'm fine. I, I can jump to ninety-one sixty point oh one, but then we go back, right? Okay.
Sorry, it was just the order that was in the agenda.
What did you just say, Russ? We have a ninety-one sixty.
Ninety-one sixty is, uh, public attendance at school events. It was revised in February of twenty-twenty and Neola does not have a policy that matches with this one. So this stands alone for us.
Hang on, wait, wait, wait.
Ninety-one sixty is our policy.
Yes.
Ninety-one sixty point oh one is Neola.
Neola has a ninety-one sixty?
Ninety, Neola has a ninety-one sixty point.
Oh, sorry, they're out of order.
Oh.
They're out of order, that's why.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so let's pick one. Which one are we doing? Are we doing ninety-one sixty?
Well, I, I was on ninety-one sixty point zero one and then we can.
Back up and do that.
Okay.
So you got complaint.
You were just saying that.
Complaint procedures related to alleged discrimination regarding accessibility. We don't have this. My notes say to ask Dr. Rendell, is this something you would like?
Isn't this tied into another policy? Or Mr. Gibbs, this is an OCR thing.
Yeah, this is tied into.
Yeah, if we don't have it covered somewhere else.
Yeah, I would want to search the policy.
Because this is specific to like ADA.
Yeah, if you have an accessibility complaint, where to go. I'm sure we, we have it on the website and everything.
I actually feel like it's covered in other places.
Right, I would, I would say that it's covered elsewhere because we do list who to contact and all that in other places, but I'll double check for you.
So you're going to double check and if we don't, you want to put it in?
I think we probably should if we don't have it, because it seems like it's one of those things you have to have.
But if it, if it appears like it's covered in other places, do we not want to put it in? I guess that's the question.
Yes.
Okay.
That's my thought.
Yeah, that's my thought, too.
Okay.
It says we have this in here somewhere.
So I'm hearing you say that he's going to check and if there's not, if it's not in there, that you would like to have him add it. Is that what you're saying? Okay, Dr. Rendell, you got that?
Absolutely.
Okay, ninety-one sixty, public attendance at school events. There's a Neola policy revision. You guys had a chance to take a look at it?
I had written, they had a July update from this year. And our, okay, so there is a part in here that refers to seventy-four forty and it talks about metal detectors, but our seventy-four forty doesn't mention metal detectors currently. I don't remember what our revisions were because we haven't had those seven thousands come back to us. So I wanted to check on that. Do we need the part about constructed after? There was something about being constructed after nineteen seventy-seven.
Yeah, it's right there for facilities constructed after.
Yeah, we don't have that, but I think, I don't know if we, if we need to add that in because we don't have that on ours. And then also, letter E, sorry. Letter E. Wait, we don't have a letter.
On ours?
What the heck? Sorry, my computer's doing weird things.
For any distribution.
Um, I have E should be number five under D. Just a technical change.
I got you.
Yeah, we can do that.
It, because it actually is a part of D. And we need to add the new language about interference with events.
Is that about the first paragraph?
It's at the bottom, in the green on the Neola. All of that interference about, because it talks about if you interfere with an event, what'll happen to you.
Go to jail.
All the things that you can't do. Well, you lose your visitor privileges.
Yeah.
You'll be reported to law enforcement.
Yeah.
And unfortunately, this state, we need that. So I, this one definitely needs some work.
Okay. Anybody else? Any questions on this one? Public attendance, um, we do have, there's something in there that talks about no alcoholic beverage or controlled substances may possess, consume, or distribute at any function sponsored by the district. We did have Space Coast Daily Park that used to rent out, uh, land. I think there needs to be some sort of an opportunity for that to continue on other property, not our school property, right? So like if we have, if we have vacant land.
Yeah.
We can lease it out to an entity to host events. It's not near our schools. So what happened is, is at the Space Coast Daily Park, which was our Viera middle school.
Right.
We raised a ton of money for the district. I mean, it was like a hundred and sixty thousand dollars during the course of it. And they would, they would have concerts there and they would serve alcohol. But it was not, it was, it had to be like a certain distance from the school and it had to be a fence put up. There was like all these, these components. I think that that should continue.
I think we had a special contract to make that work because this says onboard property, which would have made that not. But somehow, whatever, we did the lease for that.
Yep.
You want the risk management.
Yeah, it was a contract and the contract explicitly allowed to do that and they indemnified us completely.
Right. And I think as long as that can continue to happen when it's brought forward to us, there may be a piece of property somewhere where somebody else may want to start utilizing. And if that's the case, then we should be able to let them use it.
As long as we don't broaden it, because I'm not interested in allowing alcoholic beverages or on our camp, on our property for any other.
No, not for campuses, but, um, I would say that if there's an entity that would like to use our vacant property, if there's something, they're allowed parties on it and do whatever, they can lease it from us. All right.
We can have that conversation later.
We already do. We already did. I just wanted to make sure that there wasn't anything inhibiting it. So as long as that can continue, Mr. Brune.
I'll work with operations on that part.
Just make sure that there's a place for that in the niche. All right. All right, um, moving, does anybody else wish to have anything to say about that? All right, next up is going to be ninety-one ninety, charges for industrial technical projects. Again, am I skipping by some, some of the policies?
No, no, you're good.
All right.
It's the same.
Yep, okay. All right. Are we all okay with continuing down this? Does anybody wish to change anything? Okay. This was, I, this was an area where I thought, um, we could do some work. And what I mean is, is that we were doing some tours the other day of O'Gally High School. And we had spoken about allowing our aftercare, our schools, that after school ends to open up as almost like a business. And let me explain it to you. So like you have marine mechanics at O'Gally High School. There's no reason that after school, those students couldn't go to work on people bringing in their boats and everything else. Many school districts across the state already do that. It brings revenue back to the district. It brings revenue there and it gives the kids firsthand experiences. They were, all the parents were asking about it. Then you go to the next one. So all of our career and technical programs should be able to be, uh, sent out on like an enterprise zone, kind of like what we have the other ones, so that we're hands-off, but it still continues to work. We had spoken about that kind of quasi. Where's your thoughts on that, Dr. Rendell?
I need to have Mr. Gibbs weigh in on what like our liability is.
Sure.
If we're opening up a, you know, marine repair, engine repair after hours on our property, do we need liability insurance or like what kind of business operator's license or what, you know?
Or, I mean, what would be the goal to operate as a separate business?
We would not, so we would enter into kind of like the same operation that you have for your aftercare. So you have an entity that comes in, right? Utilization of the students and performs a service and pays money back. Many other school districts have it to where you can go get your oil changed. You can go get your, you know what I mean, like, these are things that they do, they give the kids firsthand.
The policy says they can charge for that.
Right.
Is it a part of the, like, the CTE class, though, or?
CTE, other, there's other entities. Just the ability for a school to set up the opportunity for children to work utilizing our facilities after hours.
Oh, after hours.
Right, yeah, and I, I remember in other districts, I know in other districts, they use like their CTE mechanics program and they allow employees to bring their vehicles in and they'll do world changes and things for a nominal fee.
Pay the employee pay the shop fee.
Right, as a part of their CTE learning. I have not looked into just operating a business after hours. I'd have to look into it.
Okay. If you would look into that and then see where our exposure is and stuff like that, I, I think there's a way to win there and give our kids opportunities because one of the problems we have is students are, are limited based on their transportation.
Yeah.
And so if we were able to create a situation where they're able to finish the day and go to work, that would be great. You know what I mean, for some of the ones that don't have it, that's all. Okay, so we'll take a look at that. Anybody else have anything to say about ninety-one ninety? All right, ninety-two hundred, volunteers. Anybody wish to speak to this? There's some Neola changes.
I think we need this policy. I think we need an emphasis on volunteers like never before, but also I don't, I couldn't see a policy that we had. I may be wrong.
Bless you.
I don't think we have a volunteer policy.
Nope, we don't even have a person at the district.
No, we really just have, uh, it's mentioned in ninety-three hundred as a group of people that we want to recruit, including volunteers, but it's not, it's not even close to what, um, Neola has.
Yeah, I, I think it would be good for us to have a volunteer policy since we do have volunteers. There's, and they are covered in bits and pieces all over the place, but to, to, um, just to have it one place, I think that would be a good idea. I'd like to add this one.
If you guys remember, this is something that we gave direction on January, in January about that we would like to see some, and I think this is a good time to address it. Dr. Rendell, like, uh, we had spoken before about somebody, you know, some sort of streamlined process to where, where do you go if you want to be a volunteer? Right? Stuff like that. And then this ties into, right, retiree volunteer program. I love this. So if you guys are okay with taking it, going back to staff and figuring out how to do that, with one caveat that on top of that, I'd like to have some sort of a person at the district that is the head of volunteers. Or something. You know what I mean? Maybe security or something.
Yeah, that would love one more time.
Anyways, I think we're all in agreeance, something needs to be done. You guys know best. If that's okay, Dr. Rendell?
Yep.
Okay?
A long policy for volunteers.
It is, and that's why I don't even want to get into.
Basically, the direction right now is to review the Neola policy and consider adopting that.
Yeah, there's options.
Because there's so much there that I think you just let staff work through it and bring it back to us with the idea that we want to make it happen. All right, all your favorites, ninety-two eleven booster clubs and outside support organizations. All right?
We do have ninety-two ten, just parent organizations.
I apologize, you are right. You are right, it's the Neola updates, I apologize.
Okay, no, that's all right.
I can, I can toggle. I can toggle back and forth.
I don't think ninety-two ten's on there because Neola doesn't have that template, so.
Right. So, okay.
Oh, because it's a BPS policy, oh, that's right. I think ninety-two ten is fine, whatever it is.
Yeah.
I had written down fine.
If anybody else wishes to talk about ninety-two twenty? Ninety-two ten, sorry? Just don't listen to me. All right, you guys good?
Yeah, I'm good.
Moving on. We have, the next up is going to be.
Now we're done.
Ninety-two eleven booster clubs and other outside support organizations.
This, I, I had written, "We need to update but keep ninety-two ten separately." So we, there's some crossover, I guess. But our ninety-two ten, which is unique to us, is specific to parent organizations, which I think is, it's, it's different. So that is whatever my note said, said, "Need to update but keep ninety-two ten separate." There is an administrative procedure that's established to this one that is specific to Revard Schools Foundation.
For ninety-two eleven?
Ninety-two eleven has an administrative procedure about Revard Schools Foundation that is specific to like how they operate because outside support organizations falls under that. Um, and they have just different kind of rules. So I, our, our ninety-two eleven needs updating, but I don't, I want to leave the, the ninety-two ten part as a separate policy.
What in ninety-two eleven do you feel needs to be updated?
Yeah, there's a lot that we don't have in ours. You know, let me see if I can.
I think one of the struggles is when it comes to the booster clubs, they're all ran differently. And it seems like, I don't know if, if athletic directors can sit down at the beginning of the year, is a good task for Kevin to, to really charge them with understanding how they're created and making sure they're formed correctly. I have seen booster clubs that are literally running around the principal and doing things against a principal's will to get what they want.
There's a book, there's a book that they're supposed to be.
I know, but I'm just telling you that's, that's not happening.
Yeah. Yeah.
So, um, one of the things I looked at too is Orange County, you know, they had something in their policy written specifically about booster club deposits, all funds collected in a school internal account, which I like that as opposed to its own booster account, just based on some experience I've recently had. I think that would be smart of us to just have some oversight and protection there. And if, God forbid, something happens with the booster, uh, you know, falling apart, then it's still with the school and it's still in the internal account with that, that sport or that activity.
That's a hard one because there, I hate to limit, there's some that are doing really good job. Like, for example, some of the band boosters that, you know, I've been a parent that like, they are, they're a separate organization. They have their own checking account. We all meet, like, all the parents are expected to meet in the meeting. They present the budget, just, you know.
Right.
And, and it's, it's very clear. There's lots, it's high participation. They cooperate with the teacher. We cooperate with the, but then you have, we've had some, since I've been on the board, they've been like, they're totally.
Yeah.
Going astray. And we actually had one that we shut down.
Problem.
Um, so I, I, so I just would hesitate. If we need to reinforce the rules that we already have in place, I think we need to have a clearer, so some of the things that were in the policy had to do with that we didn't have. There was a part about insurance. There's some financial requirements and rules about fundraising. I, you know, we may have it somewhere else in like the book about booster clubs and parent organizations, but I think it would be good to have it clear in policy all in one place.
Yeah, so I was going to see if Mr. Brune would work with Mr. Robinson and kind of go through this to see what we need to.
And probably Ms. Lesinski.
Yeah, this is, this is, some of the, I mean, this is finance. So I will support finance as much as we can on, on some of these policies coming up, for sure.
Yeah.
But it needs to be consistent. That's, that's the struggle.
Well, that's why we'd get Kevin Robinson in the room when they go through this.
Yeah, especially when it comes to athletics.
Okay. Everybody, so the direction is that you're going to bring back something that has the updates and is more in line with our school policies and stuff. Okay? All right, moving forward, the next one up is ninety-two fifteen direct support organizations. There's a Neola up.
Yeah, this is the one about BSF. And then, see, I should have read all my notes all at the same time. I had written down, do we need this for Bravard Schools Foundation? And then we can remove the administrative procedure from ninety-two eleven since it's specifically about BSF. So we could have a separate policy about the Schools Foundation. Uh, that makes sense to me rather than have it in.
It does.
I think you, you're a hundred percent right. I think when I read this, it felt the same way. So if you want to go back, meet with them and ask them to come forward with a.
Well, this was a good one.
Yeah, I agree.
Just make sure we're good with all that.
Just make sure that what, you know, she may need, what, what's coming?
She's getting ready.
All right.
Coming for an upcoming.
Okay. Um, I think in that regard, ninety-two fifteen, um, if you can take it back, meet with staff and come back, right?
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think it's all in statute anyway, the relationships that they have with school districts and what all the rules are.
I mean, it's pretty, yep, 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 absolutely. All right. So the next one that we have is ninety-two thirty gifts, grants and requests. The board is duly appreciative of public interest. Does anybody wish to speak to this item?
This is a duplicate of seventy-two thirty.
Okay. If that's true.
But it's fine the way it is.
If that's true, do we need to pull it out?
I don't know. Neola doesn't have it.
It's the exact same as seventy-two thirty?
Mm-hmm.
Well, then we don't need it twice.
Sometimes if someone's looking for it in a certain place, they can find it. We have lots of other duplicates.
Yeah, it's a Neola redundancy they carry over.
Yeah, except for Neola doesn't have one.
And this actually has information.
Oh, no, they do. No, no, they don't.
Talks about the foundation and stuff like that, so.
Yeah.
Okay, so I would say.
It's fine the way it is.
Need to keep it. Yeah, sounds like Rendell wants that. Ninety-two seventy home education programs. Uh, anybody wish to speak to this one? I gotta check my notes on my phone.
Um, I, so I had written down, ours is good. There weren't any Neola updates, but I wondered if there should be because of the scholarship names.
Oh, yeah.
Because, you know, they've changed the names of the scholarships on these that are listed here. I think these are outdated, but it's funny because Neola usually is really good in updating those, but, um.
It hadn't been updated, it looks like, since eighteen, so that might be on their upcoming.
Okay.
Yes, we received, um, for that one, um, instead of putting all, listing all of the scholarships, we just made it generic, says scholarship programs. So then you don't have to go in and, you know, change every year.
And they change the names. I'm, I think that's a.
And then we also wanted to make sure that the superintendent, the new legislative changes that pertain to home education and what's required upon receipt of the notice, that we can't, um, we, we can't require them to submit any additional information than what's, than what's expected. And, um, about the written notification of the available industry certifications, what's required with that.
Okay, so it sounds like she's ready to take this on and revise it.
Can I ask you a quick question? Just if you guys know yet, and this may be something. If I'm a homeschool student and I wish to take a career and technical class that has a cap at the school, so say like I want to do it at Vieira, but I live in the Vieira area, does that, does the homeschool give the opportunity to go there because they live in the district, or is it still a barrier?
I think it's still a space available basis. I think once, again, I think it's space available.
It's not, it's not based on their, where their geographic location is to get them in without having to fill out the application stuff. Okay?
And it says specifically, the student's enrollment should be on a space available basis.
I got you. Okay. And then, uh, they can still sign up for interstalistics and stuff like that.
Yes.
Perfect. One of my best athletes was a homeschool kid. All right, anybody else?
So we're sending this, so it looks like.
Yes, staff will work on it.
Yeah, she's got, she's pounding, she's ready to go.
Cool beans.
All right. Uh, so that's ninety-two seventy. Next up, we've got in the Neola templates that we have, we have ninety-three hundred.
That's us.
Yeah, awards recognition and incentives for staff, school volunteers, advisory committee members and community members.
I had written good.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I don't have anything on the phone.
We're good? All right. All right, next up on the one at ninety-five hundred, let me check the policies. Nope, ninety-four thirty, community volunteers and business partners. Last time it was updated was two thousand fourteen. There was no Neola update. What do you guys wish to do?
I think this is still good, and this is different from our, from the volunteer policy that we were looking at adding, because this one is specific to certain things.
Yep. All right, everybody okay with it?
Mm-hmm.
Ninety-four thirty point zero one mentoring program. The board believes that a mentoring program is, uh, right now is updated in two thousand fourteen. There is no Neola template update. Um, what's the wish of the board?
Just looking through it, it seems to match what we're doing. We had that new mentoring emphasis starting a couple of years ago, and it still works for what we added in from what I can see.
Okay.
I don't know if Mr. Brune had any suggestions.
Mr. Brune?
No.
I think everybody's okay with ninety, ninety-four thirty point zero one. Everybody okay with your program? Okay. Going back, ninety-five hundred, relations with educational institutions and organizations. Looks pretty close.
Yep.
It just gives that board or the superintendent, you got any preference there, Dr. Rendell? It says the superintendent shall. You're okay with that?
Yeah, because usually that's superintendent or designated superintendent.
Perfect. Everybody okay with that?
Yep, yep, yep.
All right, moving on, we have, next one up, apologize, let me get through this. Next one up is ninety-five fifty-five. It's inside your Neola. It's partnerships with businesses. Kind of gives a, you know, fluffy.
I think this is maybe more for smaller districts. Like, it has to do with being a part of a consortium.
Yep.
So I don't know that this one works for us.
Yeah, it's kind of like, like Nefex and Paces and all of those ones that they want to be.
Yeah, but the, the ones at the small, so I don't think we need.
I mean, right now superintendent can join any of the organizations, not join. You know what I mean? Like, there's not a, allowing him to be free. I don't think we need it. You guys okay?
I'm okay.
All right, moving on, the next one up is, I have ninety-six, but let me see, make sure here. Ninety-six hundred staff student participation in community events. It's pretty much identical is what we had from the other ones.
Yeah, I had written down, probably from the Neola example A, um, superintendent shall, oh, so, so the Neola version says, hang on, wait. Oh, I was on the wrong one. Hang on. Um, A, community activities and events which are related to the district's course of study are incorporated as appropriate into such courses. I had just written down an example that is the Bravard Symphony Orchestra Concert for the fifth graders. So I think this is, this is good the way that it is. It works with what we're doing.
Yeah, it's pretty much identical. Everybody okay with that?
Um.
All right, moving on, this, next one on the Neola is ninety-seven, what do we have here? Ninety-seven hundred, working with special interest groups. All right, go again. Anybody wish to change? So there's no Neola update on our ninety-seven hundred that we currently have.
We did that one first.
Yeah, but this is, Neola's is like our ninety-seven oh two. So Neola's advertising commercial activities, if you go over to ours, it's like our ninety-seven oh two. Um, they don't, you see that? It's.
Yep.
Um, ours is, and on our, on our ninety-seven oh two, they're very similar. Ours is more comprehensive. Um, it has an administrative procedure. I just would like staff to make sure that they're updated.
So like ninety-seven, so Neola ninety-seven hundred point zero one advertising and commercial activities is identical to our advertising and commu-, and commercial activities.
Well, it's similar. Ours is more comprehensive.
Right, I'm sorry. I meant the name.
Yeah, right.
I apologize. So there's some cross-reference. So would you guys like to move, uh, it's kind of like.
Like, do we want to renumber them?
It's all.
Because our ninety-seven hundred point oh one has to do with special entrance, interest group recruiting students in the classroom, which is like the Boy Scout, Girl Scout policy, but even though it doesn't, it's not called that.
Nice.
But there's specific rules and statutes related to that, 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 like, they, if they're gonna, they're gonna, they can come in the classroom and do a presentation to try to recruit boys and girls to do Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts or whatever those type of clubs, but they have to follow all these rules. It's in the letter home and all of that. So I don't know if we need to, Neola doesn't really have one of those. Um, I think ours is fine, but if we want to renumber it to something else, we'll renumber it to what theirs is.
Or you just keep ninety-seven oh two, because, and just not do the Neola ninety-seven point oh one.
Just leave it. Yeah, I mean, we can just leave it. I, I think our ninety-seven hundred point oh one, which is the Boy Scout, Girl Scout policy is fine.
I concur.
Ninety-seven oh two is fine.
Right.
Um, but just.
Keep going, keep going.
But just check on the administrative procedure.
Ninety-nine fifty.
No, 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 no. Um, ours doesn't have any, the only thing on ninety-seven hundred point oh one, ours, the Boy Scout, Girl Scout policy, doesn't have any legal references. And so there wasn't anything for me to look and go, I, I'm sure all this has to come from somewhere. It may have come from years ago, district staff saying this is, these are things, but I'm pretty sure there's some regulations around this.
I'm pretty sure, yeah, there's a statute that authorizes them coming into the classroom.
Okay.
So what I would say is there's just a bunch of the.
Just need to reference that. Just need to drop that in.
Yeah, and, and just make sure we're not missing anything. I mean, Neola doesn't have anything, so I, I don't know, you know, it's hard for us to know, are we, are we keeping up with everything, but we should at least add the reference.
There's three or four of these that are cross-referenced on, you know, if you guys can just get through it and figure out what the best case scenario is. All right, next one up, ninety-eight hundred charter schools.
Oh, wait, we didn't do ninety-seven oh one.
That's where I was just like, I just told them, like, look, you know where our direction is. If you want to reline it and do everything.
Yeah, but ninety-seven oh one is different. Are they?
Yeah.
It is. It's material literature to students.
Oh, Neola doesn't have one of those.
This was what I thought you were talking about.
Okay, now I was talking about ninety-seven hundred point oh one.
Right, and that one is identical to our ninety-two, ninety-seven oh two.
We didn't talk about ninety-seven oh one yet, which Neola doesn't have, just we do.
I thought you were speaking to that as the, um.
The Boy Scout, Girl Scout policy?
Right.
No, that's ninety-seven hundred point oh one.
All right, so we can go ninety-seven oh one, distribution of materials and literature to students. Pretty, uh.
This has some things that are like sections, so, so Neola's ninety-seven hundred, um, about working with special interest groups. This has some that are like Neola's section C of ninety-seven hundred. Um, our, and I looked at our, we have some administrative procedures for this that seem to be out of date. Um, so I, this one actually just came up recently.
Yeah, it did.
Yeah, it did. I think it was misinterpreted. Um, but it would just, we don't have a Neola guideline to go with this, but we need to, um, because it was, it was taken, and it just, I'm not going to talk around, I just want to be very specific. When we were talking about distributing the, um, the constitutions, right, the pocket constitutions, and I'm just going to ignore the part that people like drastically blew that up and said that the Declaration of Independence, the constitution and the actual oath that people say when they become citizens of our country are, you know, propaganda. Um, it's, it's supplemental instructional materials, and it went through the process that was supposed to go through, which was last year and this year. It went through the assistant superintendent who had the content specialist both years, take a look at it. Same thing when I've had groups approach me and say, hey, we want to give dictionaries to all the third graders at whatever. Same thing. Brought it to, at the time Jane Klein, hey, can you have, she had her content specialist look through the dictionary, make sure it's just a rural dictionary, and got the proper approval. This right here, this policy is, to me, very specific to, um, like advertisements and other things. This is not, we have a thing, so if someone wants to pass out information about an event coming up, they have to go through Mr. Brune's office, correct? And we, it has a disclaimer that says this is not, doesn't represent the views of Bravard Public Schools, um, but they can send it out, um, you know, or put it in the folders or whatever. So, you know, there's not any Neola template on this. This is a Bravard specific policy.
Yep.
But it's fine. I'm fine with it the way that it is. Um, but if staff wants to take it, we need to make that more clear so we don't run into the problem again.
The only note, the note I had on, when I reviewed it, was to discuss with the board if you wanted to add language about donations, and that was because of the constitutions were technically a donation and not, help me, donations and not.
It was a donation of a primary source in lieu of a supplemental material.
Primary source, thank you.
And so I don't know if that's the, I don't know if we need to react to that, but if it's a, you know, we do get donations that don't necessarily fit into other categories at our schools. Um, and then the other part of that is, do you want to discuss any type of attached documentation that would be required or be prohibited, um, that would go along with donations? I have no opinion either way. I just wanted to bring it up for discussion.
Do you have an example of what you would mean?
Um, ability to, you know, put their logo on that, uh, the donation or a QR code or.
Oh, you mean like if they're asking?
Where, yeah, are they gonna take you one step removed and then they're gonna be able to talk to the student about what they want? Have that something the board has an appetite for. Otherwise, it's fine the way it is.
I, I'm fine with it the way that it is. Um, I, I mean, you know, I think we need to deal with that on a case-by-case basis where we're actually looking at the actual item, which in this case we did. Um.
We need to see in the legalese and then you start going, I'm fine with the latest too.
Yeah.
Yeah, I have to just be honest with you.
Because the thing is, because people had problems with websites being on things. But on our advertising, we sell for our planners, and I think this was some of the point Dr. Rendell brought up to me, on our planners, on whatever, we, businesses are putting their websites. Does it mean we're endorsing that, that dentist or daycare or air conditioning repair people? You know, we have, we have those things all over things that we're handing to our kids. Um, there are signs all over the field, right, from sponsors. Um, I think, I think this is fine the way it is unless, you know, if there's clarification, if in that process kind of highlighted this, if there was something, this, my suggestion would be if there was something that we needed in policy to make that more crystal clear for staff, that would be helpful. I would be interested in working that. But I feel like we did the process and it was handled, even though it wasn't the public kind of, some of the public got upset and took it the wrong way. Um, but if it would be helpful to staff to be more clear and from the board's direction, I, we can, I'd be happy to do that.
Okay with that. You guys good?
Yeah, I have a question. I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask some questions here about this, um, because we talk about clubs in this quite a bit, too. So as we get in here, can you give me an example of a non-district sponsored, student-initiated club versus a district-sponsored student-initiated club? What would that look like? What is a non-district versus a district?
I think FCA.
Is FCA a district or would it be a non?
Boys and Girls Club would be a good example because it's a non-district, um, American region.
Gay Stride Alliance.
Key Club.
Yeah.
Interact Club, those are sponsored by a local organization.
Or even like, wouldn't like a Future Farmers or the Technology, whatever, because those are like national or state organizations.
Right.
As opposed to a school-sponsored club, which would be like.
Student government.
Yeah.
Honor Society.
Okay.
Those would be school-sponsored, but then you could have, like I said, Interact Rotary.
And they all have to be student-led for clarification? They cannot be teacher-led, is that correct?
Well, you need a sponsor.
You need a sponsor, but it's supposed to be student-led, correct? Um, and then as far as like the advertising and materi-, like I'm just reading in here and going through, like, it looks like really, clubs shouldn't really even be talked about or advertised at all based on the policy during the school day. Am I understanding that correctly or no?
Uh, where are you seeing that?
All right, hold on.
Because I think they could, like, have in announcements and stuff.
Right.
Okay, hold on, sorry. I found something.
You took your time. We got like three policies left in.
I know, and I don't want to, it's four o'clock. I'm like, ah, we're trying.
No, we're doing great.
I was thinking about the last one you're saying, let's move on and watch for.
And leave one leftover at the end.
We don't matter.
No, no, no. They have a deadline. They have to bring them back to us in January.
I know, listen.
Yep.
I just thought it'd be fun.
Okay, maybe not. Sorry, I read that backwards, I think, because it looks like they can.
Well, if, if it says that, we need to be careful.
Well, this is, I mean, this is for, yeah, we don't distribute materials or literature to students that are paid for. They're nonprofits that can get access if they go through the proper process.
Right.
So written materials distributed by students from tables or booths may not be distributed during instructional hours or during the transition time between classes. The principal may allow the distribution of written material before the school day begins, during lunch periods, or after the instructional day ends. All right, sorry, I'm just, this is one that's come up a couple of times for me, so.
Oh, shoot, my battery's dying.
Huh?
Your battery's dying.
Okay.
What would you like to do in this, right?
I, I don't know, that's why I'm just...
Do you want to table this one?
No.
Make us come back?
It's gotta come back anyway.
It's gotta come back anyways, I know, so...
Well, except for we were saying it was okay, except for the administrative procedure. I, I, it's gonna come back if y'all, if y'all have something you need us to do.
Yeah.
That, to make it more clear, if, if you think it needs to be more clear. And honestly, I had written down here administrative procedure is out of date, question mark, but I, now I can't find what I thought was out of date, I think it was the five cents.
Per page, or something?
Yeah, there's, as a result, from the commencement of the two thousand ten, two thousand eleven school year, and each year henceforth, each entity desiring the district to distribute their literature to students, in the classroom on their behalf shall pay a five cent fee for every student registered to the school where the literature, literature is to be distributed. So I don't know if that's, we're even doing that.
Yeah, we probably need to take that out, because I don't think we're collecting that.
Yeah, so anyway, ninety, the administrative procedure needs to be...
Well, the other thing...
If we're gonna make that correction, we have to bring it back to you anyway.
I think the other thing that would be wise is for the, uh, the clubs to be displayed maybe on our website tied to that school, I see some schools that are doing it really well, and others where I'm like, they have no clubs, what's going on? So, um, just so that, you know, I don't think the community, they will look there and they'll see what's available for their students, so... All right, that's all.
Okay.
All right, come on, ninety-seven oh-two.
Yep, ninety-seven oh-two, here we go, guys.
Yeah, we did this one already, because this is the one that's like, Neola's ninety-seven hundred.
That's right.
The only issue, the only issue that we have here, and, and I apologize, because I had it in my notes on this one, um, is that we're saying on here that we're not signage or in school buses, we're not... Start talking about some of the advertising, um, requirements that are in here are inhibitive of us expanding our advertising footprint. If it's okay with you guys, I would like to work with Dr. Rindell about opportunities that we have to raise money, because, look, we have those large vans that are running around all the place, they run three times a, a week, we can have those wrapped with advertising, you know what I mean? There's an opportunity for us to do some of that, and there's some inhibitive policies inside of here with both selves, you know what I mean? I would like to work with them on, A, you know, and bring that back when it comes back, if that's okay. There's some, it allows us to advertise on our man, there's opportunities to advertise in our buses, there's opportunities, and I'm not saying we do it, I'm just saying we look at it as an opportunity to, to possibly increase our revenue sources.
Yeah. I'm just looking at those legal references from Neola's ninety-seven hundred point oh-one, one of them has to do, it's the same one about use of buildings and grounds, that we control that, and the other one has to do with harmful materials, so that's probably like why we can't do like alcohol and stuff like that.
There's some, you know what I mean, I, I would just like to say, if there's an opportunity for us to advertise, we leave it open, and then we take it back, and when somebody comes in and says, hey, I have this idea, we can always tell them no, but the opportunity is, is that if it's there, we can do it. I would love to increase this, um, opportunities, that's all.
Yeah.
So if you guys are okay with that, I'll, I'll get with Dr. Rindell, it won't be anything that's outside the scope of legal, legal, but increase our stuff, okay? Is that cool?
Yeah.
Okay. Everybody good with that? All right, and I think I know why Ms. Tara Harris is here, ninety-eight hundred, charter schools.
Yes, so for ninety-eight hundred... Oh, yes, it's a lengthy, this is a lengthy one. We just want to go with Neola, but with just a few modifications, um, basically under that section around the application contents, we would like to, um, recommend option one.
Where is the page?
Application procedure, is that what you're talking about?
It is under, it is, let's see, application content, so it's the third page.
Page seventy-nine.
Oh, wow.
Of the fourth page.
I think. I don't know, that has to do with special education, never mind. I thought I found it.
Fifty-four.
Okay, that's where I was.
Oh, I went too far.
Okay, option one, applicants are required to sign another penultimate perjury statement of assurances for...
You wanted to go with which option?
Option one, um, and that's just going with the application that aligns with the DOE.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we just need to update this one with the July updates, right, besides that? With the federal grant, um, parks and services, okay?
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
So when we re-advised this policy a couple years ago, basically what they did, they took every statute that has to do with charter schools and put it all in the same policy, that's why it's so lengthy, that's why it's so long.
Yeah, when you got two pages of statute for the end.
Which means after this session with all the dereg, maybe some of that'll...
So you're good to bring that back, Ms. Harris? Okay, so there's, the last one on ours is ninety-nine fifty, but there's one that says ninety-nine hundred that I really like.
I know, me too.
I love it.
Really? Because I had written down not necessary.
Why? Why would you not do that? Let's go do this.
I have to see what it was, because I'm trying to still get through ninety-eight hundred.
Love this, I don't know if...
You have a history teacher here, so that's...
I, I will tell you that we could do nothing better than to award Vietnam and Korean and World War II veterans their high school diploma, and ours who had not already done that.
Yeah.
This is a cool project, I think we add the policy, I think we add it to our veterans' project.
That would be such an honor to be able to do that.
Go over and get Posey to pull it.
Yeah.
We can have some fun here, man, I really do, I, I'm in favor of it, I think it's good.
I, I had just written not necessary, because I wondered, do we need to have a policy if this happens, if someone comes forth, can we just do it?
We can. We, we can issue a diploma.
Have we ever done it before?
An honorary diploma, we, it's in policy.
Okay.
But, you know, this, there's no harm in adopting this, even though I don't like to add policy, but, and then we could, you know, do so, have maybe some ROT, all the ROTC programs do a little research to see if there's anybody we need to...
That sounds like a good research project for a, for a senior.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, this is, each ROTC program can take on their local cities.
There you go.
Man, this would be great.
Okay.
All right, last one, ninety-nine fifty, television station.
I have got question marks, I had written keep question mark, update question mark, is it accurate still, question mark?
Board member, television station, I think we should have our own TV stations at our house.
Do we, we don't still have our... Well, we do have, we do have the spectrum, is this, is this supplied to Spectrum?
Yeah, we're, yeah, we're always broadcasting on there, um, something.
We're, we are, there are schools that have television stations, and we have one, Brune's been doing stuff with Rock Paper Simple.
Right, I know, but I didn't know if, like, is it still, is it still accurate what's in here?
Oh, I don't know.
Reflective of the way we do it now? Because it's...
Got a YouTube channel.
I don't think that, that doesn't count, uh, under this policy. Are you good with the way that it is?
Yeah, the, the paragraph that starts, therefore the board is exercising its option, you know, that's, these meetings keep our community informed about, you know, district policies, finance, personnel operations. And YouTube is considered, in my world, a channel as well that we have, and that's always accessible as well, so...
Okay. I, I don't have, no, I, I like that we have a TV channel, I just didn't know if it, because I, it's the television station part, is, some of the language is like, is that really what it's called?
It's capable access, but, um, it's still accurate.
Okay, okay. And then I, our administrative procedure, is that still accurate?
Uh, let me look at that.
I didn't have a problem with any of it, I just, um, I don't know, in the world of cable and streaming, some of it seemed outdated, but...
I like it.
Yeah.
We can take it, figure it out, what needs to be on there, and bring it back.
If it's fine, then don't bring it back.
Yeah, the, yeah, we're not gonna, we do abide by these still.
Okay, cool beans, thank you.
All right, everybody else, anybody else have anything, board members, got anything you wish to say? Anybody got anything? No? Okay.
So bear with me. I had a lot of conversations, uh, over the pa-, well, over the past couple weeks, if I'm being honest. Um, and I had given a heads up to, uh, Dr. Rindell that I was going to say what I'm going to say, I mean, I didn't give him the words that I'm gonna say, but he knew I was gonna bring this up. And I am purposely bringing it up now, be, out of respect of the people who are being appointed tonight, also because it's less people paying attention, if I'm being honest. I feel an obligation to say this, I feel an obligation to put it out there publicly as a statement, um, again, because I don't want to have to explain it later tonight, I just don't think it's fair to everybody who's in the room. And I am literally going to read what I wrote, because I don't want my words being, uh, misinterpreted or twisted around, uh, because I can literally go back and look at them. So, uh, tonight, we have an administrative appointment that I am very concerned with, and I asked to have this conversation, like I said, just so that we're not bringing this up at one of the other appointments tonight. We have an employee who had two significant infractions in four months. The first, which I think was a consequence of extreme grace, uh, taking away PTO hours after fraudulently reporting time cards. I call that a significant, significant amount of grace, retaining their position and their pay. Second, a prejudice comment about a population of students that are significant at their school. This led our superintendent to want to move for termination, eventually being moved to offer resignation, again, an offer of grace, which was accepted by that employee, and it was posted onto our October tenth agenda. This agreement was then removed from the agenda because a board member had encouraged the superintendent to do so, invoking that this individual was related to a current school board candidate. This candidate who showed up at the board meeting that day, and came up and shook all of her hands on the dais. Dr. Rindell told me that he had agreed to remove the item to ensure that the appropriate protocol was followed for the disciplinary action, and I want to be clear, it was my genuine impression that Dr. Rindell was uncomfortable with what transpired. I'm not blaming him for the steps that were taken. He told me he originally wanted to move for termination because those comments are unacceptable here at BPS. His own words to me in conversation pointed out the absurdity, such as, how can I justify moving this individual with comments like that? Do we put them in a school with a smaller Hispanic population, again, highlighting how absurd that would be. He told me he wanted resignation, and again, offered to allow them to resign to offer grace. And before someone attempts to refute my claims, I'm going to be very specific when this happened, it was on October tenth, before the executive session, in Dr. Rindell's office. He informed all of you after that executive session that him and I had already spoken that day, and he needed to speak with all of you individually. Next, I'm informed that the decision was revised to a six-day suspension without pay, and it was posted on our October twenty-fourth agenda, as well as the offer to, uh, continue to, to be a part of BPS and teach at Gardendale with the opportunity to reapply for an administrative position in the future. An offer I wasn't necessarily comfortable with, but I had expressed that I recognized that the consequences were significant, so I didn't push further. The offer that I assumed meant the ability to reapply would be for the next school year, for a position of leadership, not a week or two after their disciplinary consequence. I shouldn't have to state this, but someone with two significant disciplinary infractions in four months, now leading a school in the area of discipline, is not right. If someone doesn't regulate their own actions and accept the consequences of those actions, they have no business policing the rules on the students, let alone with the bias from the prejudice statement that was made in their second offense. We serve every student with excellence by having excellence at the top, and the excellence at the top is the staff who reported the infractions in the first place. Those are the people we should be praising and supporting, not making them stand beside someone tonight accepting this position of leadership. It's diminishing the fact that they put themselves on the line to tell the truth, and it subsequently diminishes the personal accomplishments of those who are being appointed tonight. It's a privilege to be trusted by parents to be responsible for their children. What would the family feel knowing all this happened after they hung up the phone that day? What does it say about the value of that child, their family, and the community that they live in? And what does it say about the staff that was offended and uncomfortable with what transpired? This individual was on our agenda now three meanings in a row, for very different reasons. First resignation, then a disciplinary action, and now an appointment to a leadership position. When in the history of BPS has that ever happened? This would have never happened if it wasn't for nepotism. Dr. Rindell would have never been encouraged to remove the resignation by a sitting board member. This wouldn't have happened if any employee not related to a school board candidate was on that agenda. I am tired of standing up and saying the hard things by myself. If this individual was a friend or family member of mine, you all would be up in arms right now. I didn't seek out this information, this was brought to me by our superintendent, the person who's supposed to have the authority to make the decisions that he made. I wouldn't have any clue that this person was related to somebody, or that a board member had involved themselves, if I wasn't told by the superintendent himself. So now I have a responsibility to speak about it. These infractions wouldn't be tolerated in any other workplace, let alone rewarded. This is my district, it's the community I live in, and it is my child's future school. Wrong is wrong if no one's watching. I want to be clear, the personnel file is public, the staff at the school knows, the families know, people already are talking. We are responsible for our vote tonight, we are responsible for the decisions we make tonight. I wanted an opportunity to put this on record, what transpired, my viewpoints, and to make it clear that everyone up here was either already aware, or now you are aware. And again, I'm not, I'm not doing this to have a debate about it, I intentionally felt the need after finding out about it, I couldn't keep it, I couldn't keep it to myself. And for me to pull someone tonight and not explain why, I felt would be disingenuous to the public. So out of respect, I did it in this workshop, so it would have less attention on it, and so that it's not in front of all of the other people tonight. I will not be speaking about this tonight, but I will be asking to move it individually, so that my, my vote can be reflective of it, but I will not be making any comments on it tonight.
Thank you. With that, we're good?